Cool. So, we'll get going. It's 9:09 AM. We're gonna jump in with capital improvement program, stormwater utility budget section. And, you know, this time, instead of just starting and stopping through the whole thing, let's run through the entire deck first and then ask questions at the end. So we have the most time to have conversation around the items we want to discuss.
Capital projects that were...
So...
So it's all capital projects that were...
Yes.
Thank you. I will give you just a brief overview of how all of this stuff works. And then thereafter, I'll turn it over to Mark Sattley to walk you through some of the details included within some of our capital projects. So this is Councilmember Norwood, you're correct. This all relates to the stuff that's under your capital projects tab. Just as a little bit of geography in terms of how that section is laid out. It starts with a narrative, a quick narrative on what each of those capital projects funds do. Then you got a series of pages that show you pictures of, you know, pictures and payment schedules related to some of the items. If you go forward to nine dash eighteen, that's like a summary of the whole thing. That's the, every one of the funds put together. And all of the pages thereafter are supporting that overall summary. So CIP consists of ten different funds, five bond funds, and three pay-as-you-go funds, and two TIFs. Overall, we'll talk a little bit more about the bond funds in just a second. But the non-bond CIP and non-bond utility are the two, I would refer to them as the two active funds within the pay-as-you-go category. And those take care of things like trail improvements and lighting. The non-bond utility is where we've talked before in past budgets about the inflow and infiltration work that we'll do as well to make sure that we're maintaining our infrastructure. Those are the types of things where each year we set aside funding to make sure, you know, from our general fund, to make sure that we're able to meet some of those needs. Our two TIF funds kind of help us on a long-term basis to manage whatever inflows and outflows are related to the Mercer Crossing area, which expires this year. And then thereafter, remember, we have another TIF layered upon that to kick in. And then the Old Farmers Branch area is TIF two. So let's talk a little bit about the five bond funds that I mentioned in my previous First one that is alive, active, doing, you know, transacting in current expenditures is our Fire Station Number Two slash Landfill Bond Fund. If you recall, that was one of our most recent that was funded, an eleven million dollar CO. And when I looked at what we have for nineteen twenty and thereafter in the budget, we have a remaining five point five million dollars left to spend on that original pot of funding. Trail Improvements Bond, that is the one where you may recall it was in the Quality of Life Bond Program, originally seven million dollars. We did four million of issuance in May of twenty eighteen. And it appears that there is four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars left to spend on that original four million. And then thereafter, we talked in our previous presentations that there'll be an additional issuance in that second part of the year to complete the work and make out the remaining seven. Our Street Improvement Bond Fund was from a Series twenty fourteen, so some funds that were authorized and portions of them have been issued throughout the years. With our most recent issuance, when we did our funding in May of twenty, May of twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, so many years, we're in the past, we're in the present, we're in the future. May of twenty eighteen is when we did our most recent funding for that. And so you can kind of see the progression there. Total that was authorized, twenty-three and a half million. And it, we can see in both this budget year that we're discussing, eighteen, nineteen twenty, as well as beyond, we have about five more million dollars left to spend on there. And then the last two are ones that have met their purpose and we've, you know, incurred bond funding, we spent the funds, you know, completed the projects. And so those, Justice Center and the Radio Center, Radio System Bond, those are all, those two are kind of in the process of being closed out. So that's the geography of how it all comes together. And then there's a series of pieces of information that will now walk you through details as to some of the projects and things that are planned within each, within these different areas.
Yeah, just something for understanding. So like when you look at nine dash eighteen under expenditures and it'll show for the, so for the justices, it shows there's two million seven there and two million seven, oh, that's prior year's.
Yeah, prior years.
So it shows nothing, okay, I got it. So there's nothing being spent this year.
But, but to try to help you to tie things together, you see under expenditures for non-bond CIP, it's one million oh fifty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, for expenditures, if you just flip the page, flip the page once with me to nine dash twenty, go down to the bottom in that same area and you'll see that same number, one million oh fifty-two, because basically nine dash nineteen and nine dash twenty is the breakout detail for non-bond CIP as it summarized on the previous page.
Got it.
You see the...
Yeah.
Leg out, okay.
Yeah, yeah, got it.
Okay.
The, the, the delta?
Not yet.
One more question. So revenue total shows three hundred and twenty-three million and expenditures, so three hundred eighteen million.
For which?
For, on page eight, nine eighteen.
Nine eighteen, okay.
You know, total revenues, total expenditures, and there's about a five million dollar gap there.
That would be a life-to-date, that would be a life-to-date project. I will say that sometimes it happens that we might set aside funding, we might set aside revenue and have it budgeted to do certain projects.
When it comes in under budget.
And it comes in either under budget or it comes in, the project is scoped differently than when we set out the plan. So that could be some reason that's driving some of that difference. But the column that you're comparing is like, like, since the beginnings of time type, type running total.
The question is, is, I mean, is there five million dollars hanging out there somewhere unassigned?
No.
Because it shows as revenue and...
No, no.
Okay. Or utilized for some other capital improvement program?
You can't, if it's collected for one, you can't use it for something else.
Only, only on bonds, right?
Bonds have to be...
Used for the intended purpose.
Used for the intended purpose, yeah. But if general fund designates funds, it can, you, generally, we want to make sure that we meet the needs of the project.
So we'll make a few questions at the end?
But it's, it's not stringent.
I got a question. Okay, I got one quick question. So I'm gonna just, he said just do now. So it says library renovations, library renovations, it said on two twenty that we'd spent a hundred in the past and then there's seven forty-six, two hundred. Is this the seven hundred you're talking about, Charles, the other transfer in?
Yes.
So that's the other transfer in because it doesn't match up dollar-wise with the ones we were talking about yesterday.
But it's sitting under twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, but we could move that forward because the transfers are closed for next year. But we, the thought was, hey, it's gonna take a year for the consultant to tell, work with stakeholders to determine what those renovations are. So we parked the expenditure out one more year with the transfer in.
You're not gonna know the answer to that.
But we're gonna do the roof, the air conditioner, or something else?
Yeah, the six ninety-five is the parking lot.
Yeah, the roof and the parking lot.
Right. But my, it's almost like, well, we're just kind of parking a magical number out there. We don't know if the library, if the consultant's gonna say we need to spend seventy-two thousand, you know, seventy-four, seventy, seven point four million or seven hundred forty-six thousand. So it's kind of like a magical...
But it's like the fire truck though.
It's like, it's like any of our pain needle projects, whether it be capital or it be for fleet, is we just put aside a set amount of money and over time, because we know, I think we all know the renovations will be more than seven hundred sixty-two, better whatever that number is.
Right, right. So, but my question is, now, I brought this up yesterday, is when we talk about pay-as-you-go, that's the philosophy that we've had for up until now with the new SB two rules. So at some point, when are, when are we gonna start migrating away from that, you know, just arbitrary chunking away cash to, you know, I guess, what's the, the other alternative is, is bonds through, you know, voter?
Yeah, it's a policy council. Historically, this council, this city is, they, they like pay-as-you-go.
Right.
And so, like, for example, the revenue stream we have coming in, the three point eight million dollars additional revenue we have this year, seven hundred and, what's whatever, seven hundred and, what's the library number, seven forty-two?
Seven forty-six.
Seven forty-two, seven forty-two is chunked over there, okay? Assuming the revenue, because that's, if, if the council were to adopt the proposed budget, then that revenue stream is gonna at least be, the hope is it'll be at least the same over time, right? And so we've already baked into the cake that transfer. So theoretically, every year, you could put that same transfer aside for library renovations or something else. So that, that's, that's the beauty of pay-as-you-go. You'll always have that as long as revenues are consistent. Another alternative, if council wanted to say, hey, you know, taxpayer dollars are best in taxpayer pockets, I mean, that is a philosophy, then what you do is you'd say, okay, reduce the taxes, get rid of that additional revenue, and eliminate the pay-as-you-go program. And we'll just issue bonds for library renovations, whatever happens. And that's, those are the two philosophies.
Pay me now or pay me later?
Yeah.
The cost is the same, it's just the philosophical approach of how we do it.
Absolutely.
And what I'm worried about is that...
But, but the bonds...
The bonds create interest.
But the bonds come with interest costs and cost of admission.
Yeah, you pay double.
Yeah, it's more expensive.
But what we've done over the past is work because we didn't have SB two. Now that we do, we might have to consider that that policy may not work moving both, right? Because of the...
Not necessarily, not necessarily. You could, you could, we could collect the maximum, we could decide we're gonna raise our taxes to the max tax rate, okay? We've got a budget that's based on fifty-nine, but we're gonna actually collect, use sixty-one. And that delta could be used for whatever other projects.
Say, say that brought in additional seven hundred fifty thousand bucks, then you could just say, okay, I know the conversation will come up about stormwater improvements. You could say, okay, we'll use, if we go to that higher level, we'll, we'll say, we'll direct staff to put the seven fifty aside every year from now until forever into the stormwater utility fund, or set aside for creek projects. And so that's, that would, that would be baked into the cake. And as long as revenues are stable or increasing, you'd have that transfer all along. The same, same thing with right now, street improvements, which Mark talks about, we said, and you and I have talked about, right now, we set aside five hundred thousand dollars pay-as-you-go funding for, for street improvements. General fund transfer to the non-bond utility fund, five hundred thousand dollars, that's pay-as-you-go.
And that's still below what it was prior to us having to make changes to that to capture money for other expenses for...
Yeah, years ago, it was up to ten million dollars per year.
Right. And if we'd have stated that and not had to reduce it, we probably wouldn't have had to pass those street bonds.
Yeah, I mean, there were, there were certain activities that this council wanted to use a lot of that money to be with.
So that, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, is that it, you know, to, to get back to, to something that would prevent us from having to pass, because when was the last time we passed a street bond, a long time before that, because we've been...
Correct.
Doing pay-as-you-go.
Correct.
Or we've been...
But, but, you know, I just, we're talking philosophies here. Because one philosophy could be, hey, Charles, we're, you know, we're only going to, because the council only approved the effective rate. So the effective rate brings in the same amount of money as prior year, essentially, except for new construction. That's a philosophy. But what that means is you eliminate the ability to do, take on new pay-as-you-go projects.
We pared the budget with all these little pet projects and raised the tax rate instead of passing a bond election.
Yeah, correct. Or you, or you eliminate programs. I mean, that's, that's, you eliminate programs and say, hey, we're gonna eliminate a million dollars' worth of programs and we'll just allocate that new money to, I mean, there's a lot of options council has.
Okay, we're ready to push forward?
Any, any more questions?
Mayor, Attorney Counsel, good morning. Here to talk about the capital improvement program, which we've already had a good, healthy discussion about. First of all, we're gonna start off about the street bond program phase two. Currently for the, for this next fiscal year, we've got actually three point eight billion dollars' worth of improvements. The streets you see listed are the ones that are projected to be improved during this timeframe. We are going through it, at the bottom, you see, we're painting a globe, we've got a couple asterisks there that says reevaluate condition. What we're doing is, since the onset of this program, initially, we followed the list. We just went right down the list. However, as we get four or five years now into it, we start having to reevaluate the overall concept of which street really needs work on at what time. So we've kind of been deviating away from what's exactly just listed and jumping to other streets that may be listed later because their condition is the worst. Some streets that were initially set to be, you know, slated to be repaired, we find that they really have not deteriorated over this five-year period, so we've been sliding them to the back. We've been moving streets up that have been deteriorating more. It really is a big differential across the board. Some streets, we question why aren't they even on the list in the first place now, because nothing's happened to them, they still look the same. What we look for mainly, and if you drive down a street, you'll see cracks sealed, you'll see all the little jagged dark lines all over the street. That doesn't mean the street is not structural, okay? It is structural stability is there, what that is, is that's cracks sealed. Asphalt's gonna crack over time. We gotta seal it to keep the sub-basin getting compromised. So that's what you see, that doesn't mean the street is in bad condition. What we look for is out of the line, curbs up and down or trenches where, where actually trenches have failed, we see divots in the center of the road or whatever. That's what we're really looking for. And so some streets, we're finding, not even on the list, that are in horrible condition that we've actually added with some of the savings that we had over the four or five years we put on additional streets, just trying to... So we're trying to be proactive and make sure that the money is spent wisely, not just because it was on the list. We're trying to look at that. The other problem, the other thing we've run into and really wasn't looked at in phase one is utilities. Utilities have thrown in, this past year, we had some issues where some streets that really needed done, Dennis is one of them. We just got through doing Dennis. We looked at it, we, we asked utility guys, okay, water lines under here, how bad is shape? Well, it's had numerous breaks over the last few years. Fine. We don't wanna go in there and spend money to put a brand-new street and then have a water line come in and tear it up again, okay? So we are trying to look, where can we find money to do? So what we've been doing is out of the bond fund, we've been borrowing from the bond fund to do utility work. And you'll see here in a minute where we're putting that money back, okay? But what we're doing is we're borrowing bond money because we have that, we didn't have any utility funds at that time. So we're borrowing that, we're moving that to do the utility work so we can do the street work and then move forward, so we can keep moving forward. So we've actually allocated now, we're up to about a million dollars if we've moved from the street bond over into utility work, but we have a plan to put that back, and I'll show you that here in a minute.
I have a quick question about the work. Do we do, and forgive me, I'm not as familiar, but do we do our own street reconstruction in-house or do we contract out or do we both?
We do a little bit of both.
Okay.
Now, our crews will do some work, but when it becomes a large project...
Sure.
We, we do contract it out.
And so do we work with the, because I know the county, like Dr. Garcia has, you know, an asphalt program, do we work with them to get out bids? Because I know they save, I mean, they've saved cities hundreds of thousands of dollars for that bidding.
No, actually, actually, we do all our own bidding and everything else. We've had, we've had a contractor that's been involved and he's given us, we've looked at extra stuff. And the other thing we do is we look at other cities and we piggyback off their contracts. So we get a lower price that way. So what we're doing is we're bidding out portions of it and then we're piggybacking off of other contracts that city, other cities have at the same time and utilizing their, their contract and have our contractor work under that. So there's been a number of ways we've been able to save it. And through the process, we have saved a lot of money the way we've been operating. So we're just continuing to move down that. A lot of times when we start bidding out, and most of our contracts are unit price, so therefore, what the one we get, if we feel comfortable with that, we look at the market, make sure we're still within reason, and they're, they're renewable for a three- to four-year period. So what we do is just continue the same contractor, renew this contract, and just keep moving on down. So we're not changing contractors, we're not slowing up. We can take them and move them from one job to the next and keep this process moving fast and not have to stop and rebuild the whole project.
Got it, thank you.
This is a map of the overall city, what we've done to date. The red are the streets that have been done to date. The blue are the ones that we're proposing for this next year. So you can see, it's been, you know, it's been pretty well diversified across the whole city, most of the streets. A number of them, you know, there's a few districts that, you know, haven't had many but which are still up for, in the next few years are gonna be projected on that. But that kind of gives you an overview of what we've done and where we're at. The street revitalization, which is what Charles was talking about, five hundred thousand dollars, that's part of, we, we lumped that into the street bond, we use that for certain streets. Of course, this next year, Oak Brook is gonna take the major portion of that, we're responsible, you know, we made the agreement to do Oak Brook, so that's three hundred fifty K that we're gonna do on there. And then we have Old North Road, which will pull up on the balance of that fund.
Is Oak Brook a match program or are we just paying straight up?
Straight.
Well, it's their matching utility.
Well, they're matching out, yes. Well, what they're doing is, yeah, is, is they're doing all the utility work to bring it up to speed.
The HOA is paying for it.
HOA is paying for all the utility work so that when we go in there and do the street, they take, everything underneath that street has been replaced and is up to par. So that we don't go in there and spend money on the street and that, again, we have breaks and everything else that we have to worry about.
So it's about, if you look at a couple questions, it's about a one-third, two-third, third, two-thirds, and a one-third.
Overall.
Okay, and so you talked about the, again, I'm newer, so I'm...
That's fine, that's fine.
So when you talk about the listings of, you know, worst, you know, worst-case street, right, what, I know you talked about, you know, just generally, just the state of the street, but do you look at thoroughfare? Do you look at, you know, how, how busy it is? Like, what are the mechanisms to decide who, what's on the list and what gets prioritized?
Okay, well, the way the list was formed was, we had, we commissioned a study for a company come in and evaluate the whole street, the whole city. And they set, I was, it was like, that actually happened before I came onboard, but they put a value, a condition, and that's how the list was initially. It didn't matter, you know, at the time, the volume or anything else, it was just the condition of the street.
They drove every street.
They drove every street.
It was like laser technology.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Tried to look through and, you know...
Sure, yeah, like, I mean...
They evaluated all streets.
When we did it for the bond, it was, you know, ninety-eight percent compared to five percent, right? That's how we rated it. So I'm sure it's something similar, but you used an outside contractor for that. How long ago was that?
That was back in thirteen, fourteen. Actually, I think the study was done in thirteen, if I'm not mistaken.
Bond was fourteen.
Bond was fourteen.
Okay.
So, but, yeah, it didn't take consideration the amount of traffic on a particular road, it's just the condition of the road.
At the time.
Now, we did, part of that was Valley View from Josie to Web Chapel. We rebuilt that whole section just last, two years ago. So part of that, we do have some other sections of Valley View that are gonna be done as part of that project also.
Okay, is there a, is it separated by district by any chance?
I don't necessarily know if it's been, but as you can, if we go back to this picture, I mean, I don't know how they actually came up and said this, I thought it was just a straight value, but it looks like it's fairly spread over all the districts.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I just, I don't know how they, they didn't go by district, they just went by the condition of the street.
Sure, no, I get that. That's just for, that's more for just my information. Like, I would like to see what, which ones are on my, on my district.
Which would be that map right there.
Okay.
As you can see, District, District One, all these streets in here have been redone.
The red. The second part of that is, most of the streets in that district are brand-new.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A lot of them are, we've been reworking that because part of that also, we get the CDPG money, some of the streets have been redone using that, those funds also.
So that's what I was gonna add, so there's a CDPG line item on here, and there, actually, there are a couple. So for, I see the ones for, there's some for sewer, water, do we apply for those individually depending on our project?
We, we apply every time, but what the, what the county has done now, they used to give us funds every year. But the funds were so small that we really couldn't, all the cities were saying, there's really not much we can do with that amount of funding. So what they've gone to is in every two-year cycle now. So instead of getting ninety-five thousand, we may get a hundred and eighty thousand now so that we can do projects. So our CDB funding was this past, or this fiscal year, we will not have any this next fiscal year.
Got it.
It'll, it'll come back around in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Then we'll have funding again. So then it'll show back up on our CIP.
Got it, thank you.
This is completely, what I was saying yesterday, that we apply for this program with the county, they go to, and they have a bigger group. But if we wanted to do like the renovation thing, they have that H O M E S Homes program, we'd have to get around one city out of the whole nation applying for that. So we're just gonna have that cloud.
Mark, can you go quickly mention the difference between asphalt and concrete and their estimated lifespan?
Yes, well, of course, concrete is gonna give you an expected life, it's gonna be a fifty years, that's what you design, never really happens, but you, you can get twenty to thirty years out of a good asphalt, I mean, a good concrete street. A lot of our streets are asphalt, which you can look at, probably, you're looking at about a ten-year lifespan on an actual asphalt street. So, yeah, it'd be better to do concrete, but the cost is gonna double what asphalt street costs you. Now, a lot of our other streets, and this is one that I kind of have a hard time with, is the fact that taking a brand-new, or taking new concrete street and overlaying it with asphalt, I understand you're trying to look, have the same look across the city where everything looks consistent, however, I don't see the purpose of it. And I think that's money that we probably shouldn't spend in that fashion, but that's something we're looking at and evaluating. Now, what we have been doing, where streets have been, they're concrete streets that have been repaired, and they're in subdivisions where everything's concrete, but they're slated for asphalt overlay, we have not been overlaying those streets to keep it consistent within a subdivision. So we don't have some that look concrete, some that look asphalt, we're trying to keep it all looking the same, at least within a subdivision. So that money, that's some of our savings where we haven't been overlaying those streets, we've been taking that money to go over and repair another street in another subdivision. So, but yes, you're gonna get half the expectancy out of asphalt streets and you are concrete. If we could go concrete, that'd be great, but there again, that's gonna make, we're gonna need a bigger pot.
When you described it...
No, asphalt's shorter life, concrete's longer, so we're gonna need a bigger pot to do all concrete.
Yeah, but when you, when you shared the years, it was almost three to one concrete to asphalt, and then you came back and said...
Twenty to thirty versus ten?
Yeah.
Ten on asphalt, twenty to thirty on concrete.
Yeah, okay.
So, but it costs more to do concrete.
Yeah, twice, you said twice as much.
But then you're gonna spend twice as much over the life of concrete.
Maybe three times.
So, so is that the right policy to have to keep it where it looks the same? I mean, would they rather have smooth streets and nice streets or a street that is bumpy? I, I think about like Mar San and, you know, Glendale, I guess, and that little area is like, the concrete streets are like broken up. I think driving back there needs more money than redoing Brookhaven from Golfing Green to...
Well, and...
I drive Brookhaven every day, I'm like, you know what, Brookhaven's fine.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because I actually, in what our budget is, Brookhaven Club is one million dollars into that three point eight. And I have the same concern in the fact that I've been talking about the streets you pretend, I said, we need to drive this because I don't feel like we need to be spending a million dollars on Brookhaven Club.
I drive ten times a day and, um.
Cause we have.
I tell you, five other streets that are.
And I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you.
But my question is, is so is that the right policy to have to keep them all the same color? I, I mean, I'm kind of wondering, that doesn't sound, that sounds kind of silly.
I, I, well, I, to be honest with you, I don't know what the reason is to do overlay on concrete, to be honest with you. I'd rather have a concrete street any day than I'd have a concrete with overlay on top of it. It didn't make sense to me. But somebody's going to have to tell me why we did that. I, I don't know what the reason.
Like the new primrose, it's concrete with.
Asphalt overlay.
It doesn't make any sense. Why would we spend that money to go put that two inch top coat back on there just to, so it's the same color?
Valley, I mean, you can say Valley View between Marsh and Web Chapel, which is smooth as glass now. And, uh, Valley View between, uh, Web Chapel and, uh, the freeway, which is concrete and it's just fine. It's just you get a little bit more road noise on that section. But it's not something that I think anybody's concerned with. But the first part is, the first section is, because it's so smooth, cars are traveling way faster nowadays than they did prior.
Well, the only thing is, if you want to see, if you want to say, the only thing that I would accept on overlaying on concrete would be values to keep for Marsh to Web Chapel, what we just finished.
Beautiful.
Okay. That is mostly a concrete street. The problem with Valley View is we didn't have enough funds to completely rebuild that section. And it was basically caving into the center where you had the water actually running down the second and third lane in the middle. So it's very hazardous condition under a traditional downpour, because you get a lot of water flowing down it. So what happens is, is since we didn't have enough money, and this is where it only makes sense. If you don't have enough money to completely rebuild the road, but you need to get that road shedding the water back to the curb and out of the main lanes. You can then go in and overlay it. That way you can thicken that center section to create a cross slope to move, to shed the water to the curb. And that's what we did. And that's why that one is asphalt and not a rebuilt concrete. Because if we had to rebuild that section out of all concrete, we would have been spending probably eight million dollars. Where we spent roughly a million dollars just overlaying it, repairing some panels and then overlaying it.
Yeah, they repaired a lot of panels, even, even.
They, they repaired a lot, but, but to totally rebuild the way it needed to be done, we would have spent a ton of money. So in, under that scenario, that's the only time that personally I would say, yes, that's a good use of asphalt on top of concrete. But just to do it, just to have it on top, I don't buy that.
So I will say, and you and I talked about this one time, if anybody's familiar with Sunbeck Circle, uh, Sun Deck or Sun Deck?
Sun Beck, Sun Beck.
The street is an asphalt street, but it's got sealer everywhere. I mean, there's just lines everywhere where it was sealed. There's nothing wrong with the street. It's smooth. It doesn't look that great, but it's a smooth street. And there's a neighbor over there complaining, and she says, you know, we got screwed, the street's failing, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, that's not necessarily the case. Uh, it's just the asphalt moves, cracks. And, but the street is still very smooth.
Any, anything in, in the base, any kind of separation you have in a base, if it's not properly prepared and everything else, that crack will propagate up and just cause a crack in the ceiling. So you've got to seal it. And that's why we do it. Yeah, they look, they don't look the great, greatest in the world. But when you drive them, the drivability is fantastic. They're smooth or everything else. It's just.
Visually.
Visually, I mean, it just doesn't work. I mean, you know, have issues with it. Uh, utility replacement and improvement. Our budget this year is two million, thirty-five thousand dollars. What we have, and we have been putting off, moving the utility money around, is we have a list station F B O P, which is in front of the Sheridan. That project has been slated for the past three or four years. We've been moving it off. This year, we're going to have to do that project, which is one point one million dollars. We have a list of utility replacements that keeps growing that we need to start working on. So we got six hundred and thirty-five K is going to move towards that. Now, here's where I'm showing the transferred street bond. This particular year, we have slated three hundred K to be refunded back to the street bond for the money we've spent, like on Dennis and some of the other streets we're moving forward with. What we're looking at is to rehab utilities for street improvement, we're going to be repaying, uh, street bond be slated for three hundred fifty K for the two out years of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. That gets us back to a million. We borrowed, gets us back on speed, gets, puts the money back in the bond fund. But helps us to keep the street program moving forward and taking care of the streets that need to be done. And at the same time, improving the utilities on it, so we know we've got a good infrastructure for those streets. We're not wasting our money. So that, that's a projection. Uh, inflow, inflow infiltration reduction, we have a one point three million dollars. Now, we're looking at phase two of a three-phase project for Rawhide Creek Sanitary Sewer, one point one million dollars. The last one, immediately, we got that one repaired. We've already seen a decrease in some of the flows going to T R A because of the, of this work that we've been doing. So we've got two more sections that we need to do. We're slating roughly one point one million dollars for the next two years. And then, uh, to continue with our meet, uh, manhole rehab, two hundred K per year in order to start rehabbing manholes, so we cut down the inflow infiltration. The main thing about doing this type of work here, which is really important, is every ounce of rainwater, groundwater we can keep out of our system reduces what we pay T R A for treatment of the sewage that goes through that meter. So every dollar we spend here, we're saving money down the road, so.
Whatever, you know, I think I brought it a year or so back about our manhole covers and then being branded for Farmers Branch. Whatever, did that ever go into?
You're going to see your first. You should probably already have the first ones out there. I think we've already been put in the ground. The new Kensington, the G M B site.
Okay.
That whole site's going to have all Farmers Branch manhole covers.
That's awesome.
I got, that deal all worked out and got them for free.
Even better. It's my kind of deal.
Good job.
All right. Stormwater is our favorite story right here, Stormwater Utility.
Everybody lean in.
Yeah. All right, here we go. We got budgeted this year, two million, nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Okay. The way this all breaks down, and I've got a number of slides here, so go through that and I'll try to spell out everything, what we're doing. Farmers Branch, Creek Projects, we got two and a half million dollars. What that's going to do is that's going to take care of basically the top eight projects that we've been moving forward. Those projects right now are under design. Okay, so we've already funded the design of those in this year's budget. So, and we had to take some of the money to move over to do the, uh, emergency improvements, okay, on the dams and everything else. So we're slating two and a half million dollars. Now, the way that two and a half million dollars breaks down, the way this two point nine million dollars is, generally, this budget is one, one million, four ninety-nine every year. What we did was we looked at the stormwater fund balance, okay, the overall. See, stormwater doesn't, it doesn't act as a C I, like C I P does. C I P, we get funds in, we use them, whatever's left over rolls over to the next year. The way stormwater works, we get budgeted X amount of dollars there. If we don't spend all that dollars, then that dollars we didn't spend rolls back into the fund, not over to the next year for us to add to what we get the next year to keep moving forward. So there was one year in there because of the Farmers Branch Creek study, we didn't spend any of it. So we had like nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that just went out of the budget and went right back into the fund. So what we did was we said, okay, what is our fund balance? And looking at everything, we have roughly, we had two point three million, Sherrell showed me two point six. So we're somewhere in that realm of, let's say, two point three million in the fund itself. So what we're projecting here, instead of one point, uh, four ninety-nine, we're saying, why don't we go take a million and a half out of the fund balance, roll that into the budget, okay? Which will leave eight hundred thousand dollars or so in the fund balance, okay? So in the fund for a rainy day or something. So that's where this got bumped up to two point nine.
Yeah. And on a slide yesterday, we showed how it normally is one four nine nine. And how it shows out of, out of whack in terms of revenues, expenses far exceeding revenues, but basically it's pulling from.
Right, it's just, it's pulling from the fund balance. So that's where we got this from.
And let me make a quick point here. The, the reason it's set up this way is if you remember, this is a fairly new fund.
It's an enterprise.
Uh, and so when we started it, we were paying for street sweeping, consulting, a lot of legal costs. Well, guess what? All those are not capital costs.
Yeah.
And, and so now, as we move more towards, the vast majority is going to be for capital improvements. I think what you're going to see, well, I know what you're going to see in the next year or so, is you're going to see this fund be converted to a C I P fund. Because it'll be predominantly capital projects. So just be aware that that's probably where we're moving.
And wouldn't it be better to, for it to be a C I P? Because then we can roll it in and have that rainy day fund that keeps accumulating funding for us in case we have another storm?
Either way, you still get to get some answer.
Either way, it just, it's visually a little easier to see and understand if it's C I P. But yeah, the, the dollars, it doesn't change how the dollars are accumulating. They're still there. It's just a little bit easier visually to see it as a C I P.
Right.
Cause this is not, stormy utilities is not general, this is its own fund. And so if you don't use the money, it goes into fund balance.
And that's, that's. And you just rebudgeted the expenses to, to, to expend more in the following year.
Yeah.
So is this the time to have the conversation?
Can we keep going and I'll say?
Okay.
Yeah, let's move. Let's go through the next few slides, because that'll, that'll help answer some of the questions and give you a better picture. All right. As we said, the one point four nine, we added the one point five. What we left in there roughly, we could have made that, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars more, but what we did was we projected two point five million dollars for those projects on the creek. Miscellaneous projects, should something come up, we left two hundred K in there for that. Some other issue comes up, that we need some funds that we, that are stormwater related, we had that. We still left a hundred K for legal issues. Anything that comes up, we left a hundred K in there for that. Street sweeping and a G I S analyst is part of that, which is seventy, roughly seventy-five thousand dollars, gets transferred to the. Then we come up with stormwater consultant. What that is, we, we had discussion about hiring on a new engineer, okay? Uh, after completely evaluating that circumstance, you know, Charles and I have gone back and forth on this, and we've talked about and discussed it. The way I, the way I looked at this was, yes, the next few years could be busy, however. I know there was a major concern of what I have been doing with the emergency stuff, to how that projects going forward. Well, with that understanding, the way I'm operating right now with the emergency stuff is not the way it normally operates. Don't get me wrong. This is, you know, and we're all having to jump through hoops, get things done, and in a timely fashion. So what happens is, is yes, I'm having to spend a whole lot more time. It, it looks like we needed somebody else to be doing it. But unfortunately, any projects from here forward are not going to operate the way we're doing now. Because this was an emergency. It was something we had to do quickly. I'm out there because this project has been changing character all, every time, every day, every storm. It changes, it changes everything we do. So decisions had to be made quickly, had to get on the phone, get with an engineer, you know, make adjustments as we went through. So yes, it took a lot of my time, it took a lot of. However, normal projects that, as moving forward from here, once we get through with this particular one, moving forward, they will be, we will engage a consultant to design it. We will bid it with a contractor. It'll be just like any other project we have out there. They're always designed, bid, and then we turn it over to construction and our inspectors will be out, not me. Okay? And we don't need another engineer out there, because if something comes up, just like it does now, he comes to me, says, we've got this situation. We look at it. If it's something I can't answer, I go to the engineer. They're my engineer. We've already hired them, do a job. I go to them. They answer the questions. They redesign, they tell us what to do. We move forward, tell the inspector, go back out and do this, and we just keep moving on down the road. That's the way all these projects on the creek are going to operate from here forward. Emergency one is just totally different circumstance, and it's not going to happen that, hopefully not going to happen that way again. So in that discussion, we started looking at that engineer also taking care of our stormwater, uh, M S four requirements for the phase two. Well, talking with Freezing Nichols, they have a program that if you sign up, and they're, they're doing it for like ten, ten to fifteen other cities right now. They have a program that's already been blessed by T C Q. Uh, it's to handle all our stormwater M S four requirements. They already got it lined out, and what, what it is, it's roughly, they said anywhere, depending on the size of the city, from twenty to a hundred thousand dollars for a three-year period. Not each year, total. So they told me we were somewhere in the range sixteen to ninety maybe in ours. So we threw in thirty thousand to cover for the next three years, okay? But at the same time, they will take care of that, so that also took the workload off of people, staff. And we outsourced it, and it's saving us a ton of money, because what I was afraid of was at the time, was that once we get through this, and I'll show you the projection, we're looking at, you know, two, three years out, what's that engineer going to do? And we don't want to bring somebody on that all of a sudden, we don't really have a place for them or a need for them. And then we got this long-term employee expenses and everything else. So it only made sense to outsource the stormwater portion of the M S four. And then the projects themselves will handle themselves, just like we normally handle operations daily, in any projects we do, okay? Uh, we're also looking at development of drainage manual. I've been really studying this. I've got another presentation. I don't know if we go over that or not. But it kind of talks about rainfall intensities and runoff and everything else. But we're doing a drainage manual, working with Freezing Nichols right now. We're, we're headed down, we should see, and the initial one, I think I discussed this before, the initial one to get on the books before September first, but will not be the final one. It may not have everything in that we're looking for, but it's the initial we need to get on the books before September first because of a House Bill that passed. Then now, the, all, everything we want in that will come later, we'll, we'll evaluate it, modify it, and then adopt another one further down. But that should be coming up here. I think it's going to be on the September third council agenda to adopt that drainage manual, okay? That's going to have some stuff into it. I, I might discuss it later. Uh, Brookhaven College Detention Pond, Bella Road, I don't know if you want to talk about that now, or you want to keep, let's keep going, we'll come back to that. But that, that's an item that we're looking at, an option to help slow down water going downstream. And then we're also evaluating other options to help slow runoff going downstream. So those are things we're looking at in our stormwater utility.
But the last three don't, don't have an, uh, an allocation yet, because that's just things we're just still discussing.
Well, this, this has an allocation which is already funded for this year.
Yes, that's what, I remember that's what Charles said yesterday.
That's already taken care of. This has no, neither one of these have allocations yet. There's just.
Cause we're just still discussing.
These things I'm discussing, I'm working through with engineers and talking and looking at options.
The Detention Pond, the hope is to get that for free.
Yeah.
So that's in the Bella Road.
Got it.
Okay, now, I don't know if y'all recognize this slide, but this was from the presentation we did back in February twenty, okay? I've modified it slightly to take out some numbers that no longer apply, because we spent the money, it's already gone, it's out of the picture. We have, this is the C I P rankings list, a total, I said, of twenty-one million dollars, okay? And as I went through that, how I broke everything down, how things have been done, you know, some projects have been finished. We're working on some other projects, and then we just said, these are not projects we're going to do, because potential buyouts of homes. It was more cost benefit to buy them out than to spend double the amount of money. So what we're looking at then is to finish all of these projects, we're looking at roughly four point four million dollars, okay? This million dollars may never, you know, who knows if it'll ever be spent? Because that's a buyout of three or four homes in an area that I've even talked to a couple of the owners. They said, well, we're not, we're not selling, we're not getting out of here. So that may never happen, may never come, you know? That may be ten years from now, I suppose.
But, but if they don't happen, then there potentially could be more money in projects towards those properties.
No, that, that's the whole concept that we would not, because in order to fix this problem for these homes, we would have to spend five and a half million dollars. That's what we discussed through here, was those projects would cost us five and a half million dollars to protect three or four homes where they're only worth a million. So the best thing to do, the most feasible, I mean, uh, the correct thing to do, we'd be to just buy them out instead of spend five and a half million dollars, because part of that is raising. Because part of that is raising the Josie Lane Bridge. That's five million bucks right there. So it just didn't make sense to spend five and a half million dollars to save a million dollars worth of property. So that's, so this right here, this number really, I don't really see that for happening in any near future unless something really changes in the picture. So in reality, we're really looking at 4.4 million. Come down here to the grants of Cooks Creek, there was a 770,000 dollars in there that we needed to, it's our share towards one of the grants. That grant we didn't get. We were not selected. So therefore that grant is now gone away. That 770K is now gone away. We're still up for one grant, but that grant is 100% funded. We don't have to participate. So if we get that grant, then we have no funds. So at the end of the day, although if we do look at this, and we're looking at 5.4, but in reality, we're only looking at 4.4 million dollars to finish all of the projects that we have highlighted on here that are not marked out because of other issues. Because a lot of these, we're already spending 2 million on because it escalated on us. Okay? We didn't know we were going to be there at this time when I did this. So anyway, that's where we are today on the creek. It's roughly four and a half million dollars.
How much is it for the Cooks Creek grant? I mean, how much is the cost for Cooks Creek?
It's a little over 3 million dollars. The grant was for two and a half. Granted, I think the pricing that we had for the 3 million was a little high. You know, we've made it look worse than what it was. Because we need a lease show over two and a half million dollars. But I think we can get, if we get the two and a half million dollars, we can do the project.
And what if we don't get the two and a half million dollars? What are we going to have to do?
Well, then we'll have to back up. And that's when some money will have to come in. And our original projection was, we were looking at the improvements we were going to. Now this, the two and a half million dollars was completely redoing the project, widening out the channel, and doing a culver upstream right on the border of Carrollton and everything to reduce, lower the floodplain. Well, the, prior to knowing that grant was there, our initial game plan was, we need to fix the channel between Valwood and B Street. And what we're going to do was, that was going to be done on a roughly a three-year project, roughly spending 300, 350,000 dollars per year and just doing sections as we go on. And that's pilot, we'll back up and do. Because now we're spending a million versus two and a half.
Over three years.
Over three years.
And where would, we'll have to wait to allocate that for next three years?
Well, that we'll have to, depending on when we finally hear, we'll have to start allocating that in. Where if you go back, you know, part of that could be here.
Yeah.
I mean, part of it here.
Yeah.
So we still have money in here if we don't use these. We still have money that we can then allocate towards those projects.
Whereas case scenario, if we don't get the grant, we're still able to move things around?
We can move things around to make up that difference.
Yeah, and one other thing, don't forget in the strategic planning session, one thing we talked about is if Mark is able to, you know, all these projects have to be designed, a lot of them have been designed.
Correct.
But, you know, one of the options is if we want to accelerate and have this done quicker than two to three years, if it's at all possible, that was the direction of council in strategic planning session. Then what we would do is we front in that money using general fund balance that's over the target level, and we would kind of front that to pay for that and then pay the general fund back.
Yeah.
So we wanted to make sure and let council know that we're still following that philosophy. If we're able to accelerate this, we will.
Correct. Okay. Now the plan moving forward, on my, at the retreat, I had it as a five-year plan. Well, now I've changed it to a three-year plan because it looks like now a lot of things have changed in the picture. Now, I'm projecting back to the 5.4. But in reality, we're really looking at 4.4, not really 5.
Well, so. And for Cooks Creek?
Well, unless Cooks Creek jumps in there, then, you know, then again, we don't need nothing there. But at the same time, if I'm using the 5.4, I'm using a higher number. Budget year 1920, which we're discussing today, two and a half million dollars. The budgets for 2020 to 2021, 20 to 2122, that's 1.3 million dollars for each year. That gives us another 2.6 million dollars. That gives us 5.1 million dollars available in the next three years. Well, next, again, to finish everything. And still have enough money if Cooks Creek jumps in there and we don't get that, we still have money where we can reallocate to start funding that also to move forward. So over a three-year period, we can complete all of those projects. And if need be, you know, as the fund grows, as we get more development in the city and everything else and the fund starts growing, this 1.3 billion could jump up a little bit.
It is going to.
You know, it is going to jump, not dramatically, but it will jump. And we can start budgeting that a little higher, a little higher. And as we do that, we can allocate more funds over here to offset this number. So there is a plan to accomplish that whole project within a three-year period. And not have to go any bonds or anything other than just using stormwater utility by moving forward.
What is your confidence level that the condition that the creek is in currently downstream with more events similar to what we've had in the last, you know, year? That all of those issues are resolved and there's not going to be additional investment needed in that portion of the creek?
Well, my confidence, my confidence on at least the portion we're looking at right now, we're working on is very high. What we're doing currently right now is going to resolve the erosion problem.
90%?
90%?
100%?
I'm saying 90.
90%?
You know, anything can happen. But the reason why I say what I do is because looking at what is, from the time we started the work back last September, okay? The section just at the part we're working at down and downstream, okay? From there to the dam, that we redid, okay, as part of the emergency repairs, is holding up. And even with the major storms we had this past spring, you don't even know that a storm has even gone through there. There is weeds growing up everywhere. I mean, it, there is vegetation, not good vegetation, growing on the banks. But I mean, it has held up. The rip raft that's downstream has not even hardly moved. A few bowlers have come out. But that section downstream has not changed from the time that we left the site doing the work to today. Now, stuff we're working on now, yes, we're going to have to see a storm come through there. Once we're finished and we get everything in line, I think we're moving forward. There still is a, there is one section that concerns me. But I think that's a section that the homeowner needs to take care of, the landowner needs to take care of. Because it's, banks are a little steep there. It's just part of what was there prior to and needs to get vegetation on. He gets vegetation on in a hole. If he doesn't, there could be some problems there. But I think the majority of what we've done, the work we've done through there, I think is going to accomplish getting rid of the erosion problem short of this one area.
What is the anticipation of the budget over the next three years for, you know, a potential matching program for people that want to put in? You know, some sort of?
You mean participation? Now, that, I'm not projecting any of that out of stormwater. That's probably going to have to come from, or may come out of there. I don't know where that's going to be. But there's going to have to be something set aside for matching.
We don't have a budget for it.
We don't have, as far as I know, we don't have an actual number.
I think it's a various of dollar amounts. I would say it's like a hundred thousand dollars for the neighborhood partnership program. That's how I'm going to word that.
That is coming from.
But I don't know.
Yeah, we're going, that's one place that we need to discuss and look at creating some money because a hundred thousand dollars, they use on home properties.
Yeah, that's a good point.
This is going to have to have, you know, probably have to.
So there's no funding, really, there's not additional funding for any of that.
Not yet. We got to create that.
And then, you know, my understanding is already some of the parks need to be dredged?
Now, one we probably need to look at in the next couple of years. But again, if Cooks doesn't come through, we still have funds in budget that are still available that we can move around to make that happen.
But we haven't needed to spend a million dollars at Cooks Creek currently, right?
But it's not projected to spend immediately, it's projected for a three-year period.
I'm just looking at the three-year total of dollars. You know, we've already spent all the next three years and then we add that in and we add other things.
Well, you got to remember, also the stormwater fund balance, even after we get through this, it's going to be 800K to deposit. So if a project comes up that we need, we can also move some of that, we can move another 500 out easy and leave 300 in there and move forward. Because that fund's going to continue to build every month. You know, it's just going to keep going and we just budget our portion. So you could take 2 million right now. But I'd leave the 500 in there for a project like that, it comes along, take 500 back out, do the dredging and do whatever, do Cooks Creek with it. And then that way you funded that and move on down the road.
You know, plus in other projects, we've talked about inflation. You know, as we start talking about the price today versus the price in two years, right? You know, there'll be additional funding that will be required there. And there's no, basically what we're doing is we're moving any emergency fund to do this. And, you know, so is there more to present? Or is it, are we pretty much at the end?
No, I can, there's a whole lot more. I mean, on this issue?
Yeah.
No, library names.
Okay, okay. So we still haven't done, we're talking about spending every cent over the next three years. And we still haven't done anything to resolve the root of the problem, which is too much water coming too fast down the stream.
Let me, let me, let me put this up. Let me go through this.
Because the detention pond Brookhaven would be?
That's moving towards that.
Yeah, but the, but we were told originally the amount of acreage that would be needed for detention was?
Forty.
It was forty acres. Forty acres. And this is an acre and a half?
Well, you know, it's, it's less than 5% of what's needed. And to create a 40-acre environment, you know, is going to take significant dollars to create a, to just have it and to call it a 20-acre retention area is going to take significant dollars. I mean, that's. Yeah, it definitely is. And that's something, but let me go through this real quick with you just, and this kind of gets us back to discussion of the drainage manual after I kind of go through this, okay? I just kind of did a quick evaluation of the east side. Okay? If we sit there and we look, okay, here's the drainage area for Farmer's Branch Creek. All right? What I looked at was everything on the upper end, well, within our city. If you take a look at this, and you know, everybody's had a discussion, well, developments caused this, developments caused that over the last 20 years. Well, if you look at this, for the last 18, well, 18-year split between here, 1999 era, 2017 era, do you see any difference? There's no difference.
I have one comment on that though, because we've spent some time working with the city of Addison and walking their creeks. And Petruvian development right now has like a 40% slope down into the creek, which just puts the water in there at an astounding rate. And they'll tell you that the city manager at Addison said the same thing to us, that that part where Petruvian fills up faster than they can, and it goes up the banks up that 40% slope. So I think this is, it's a little bit of an improper comparison because, yeah, you might have more green space, but now you've got banks that are just brushing the water in. So I just want to get that out there.
Okay. And no, and I fully understand what you're talking about. But if you analyze the whole basin, Petruvian is bad compared to the whole basin. It's negligible to the amount of water that's going there from that point.
One more point that Freezer Nichols gave us is that with the inclusion of that dam now, the creek is 70% loaded for runoff.
Well, what he said was, 70% of the runoff comes from the upstream side, okay? Of the whole creek, 70% of the runoff comes from here. That's where 70% of the water sits in here comes from here. And the other 30 is down here.
Correct.
Petruvian is a very small part of that. I mean, very minor, minor part of that. So when you, you got to look at the entire basin of what's going on and what's happening versus a, you know, one little area, but oh, but if you look at this, I mean, even at Petruvian, I mean, I understand that they have, they have some slopes along this edge where this water runs in a little faster. But this overall compared to the rest of the area is very minor to the amount of water that's going in. And looking back at 1999 where Petruvian was, I mean, this was all 100% concrete, rooftops. Well, now it's a little more grassier, of course, they built here now. But overall, the drainage area itself has not really changed.
I mean, if you look even further spreading some blading like at Farmer's Branch, look at the three ball fields that Parrish put in. You know, that was an unimproved area in 1999. There was no improvement back there behind Mobile. And then they put in the large track and then they put in the two baseball, the two softball fields and then one big baseball field. So there's a significant improvement there.
But again, we're talking about that, I mean, it's a very, very minor amount of water compared to the overall drainage basin.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, like I've shared with John, if you're at my office and a quick ramp comes for 10 minutes.
Oh, it's fine, runs off.
And it comes down and when that creek behind Sigma?
Within 30 minutes.
It is a raging event. It's coming all from surface, all that surface parking, all those streets is where it's on.
That's part what I'm going to get to here in just a second. Okay, so if you look, if you see what influences storm runoff, impervious surface development, that influences runoff. Travel time through the drainage basin, that influences runoff. Any detention facilities, that influences. Storm duration, storm intensity, those all affect runoff. Those are the items that affect. So let's look at this area. So if we look at the east side evaluation, impervious surface according to previous map, it's negligible. Really hasn't been a major change because it's fully developed, Ben's fully developed. I've been doing business in Dallas-Fort Worth for 36 years. It's been like that since I've been here. I've done projects in Farmer's Branch when I was a pup coming out of college. And it's looked like that since I've been here. Travel time, really no change because nothing's really changed in that aspect. Detention facilities, we really don't have any. What's changed is your storm duration and your storm intensity. That's what's changed over these 20, 30 years. That's what's changing. And what we've got is if you start evaluating and everything, development for this evaluation does not appear to be the problem. It's not development describing it. Storm events have gone from longer, less intense storms to shorter, more intense storms. That's the key. And storms with shorter duration and higher intensity overwhelm infrastructure. That came out of a study that was done here just too long ago, and it was published in the American Geophysical Union Journal. It says, US infrastructure unprepared for increasing frequency of extreme storm.
And that's the point. We're unprepared for it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We need to prepare for it.
Exactly. Well, the new study states that the design standards, design standards, which is key, which have come up, and I'll talk to them in a minute, are just, they don't carry, they're not high enough, they're outdated. The study also analyzed records from 900 weather stations from 1950 to 2017 and recorded the number of times the stream storms exceeded design standards. Okay? Evaluated on the basis of 100-year storm occurrence. Well, the findings came out, says design standards are outdated. Stuff we're using today is outdated. Current infrastructure no longer performing at a level designed. It just doesn't function. Eastern US, extreme storms are 85% more in 2017 than in 1950. US, I mean, Western US, it's 51% more. So we're seeing 51% more extreme storms now than we did prior to this. Infrastructure design to current standards likely will be overwhelmed more often due to number of extreme storms. That's the key. It's not development, it's the storm. It's the event. It's Mother Nature, what she's doing. So the conclusion is, although development does contribute to increased runoff, for the study area on the east side of Farmer's Branch, it appears that it is the storm event and not development that may be the major cause of increased runoff and higher velocity flows in the creek. As part of our plan moving forward with a drainage plan, higher design standards, criteria and detention requirements would. would be appropriate to be included within the plan. So that... I put that together because I'm really thankful to Charles for finding that article, because I've been saying this for the last two years, and I needed something to back me up, and there was finally a study that actually indicated what I would have been saying. But the problem is not necessarily development. We just got to handle the development appropriately. Let me get back to our...
I think that was my point, is that, okay, so we're unprepared. That's the conclusion of your support, so we need to get prepared.
Okay, this is where we're going to get prepared. We're already starting. Okay, okay. What we're starting is, we're putting together a manual. Initially, there are two rainfall intensity curves that are normally used in this area. One is Hydro 35, and the other one is TP 40. Different organizations put these together based on precipitation records and everything else. Most of the cities around here, including us, use Hydro 35. A lot of people use TP 40. TP 40 has a little higher requirement than Hydro 35. Talking to Freeze Nichols the other day, I said, "Look, I got the manual, the first initial manual, I said, 'Look, we got to change this. We got to make our standards higher. We got to make it more..." They got to handle the flow. So there is a new curve out, it's done by NOAA, that has just come out over records for the last two or three years. They produced this, these new curves for rainfall data, and we're going to implement that new curve into our manual, which is going to make the runoff amount projected higher, which means the end result is going to be, our requirement is going to be, if you're overloading our system, which they are going to be doing initially, because the system was designed to a lower standard, then you're going to have to detain the amount of water. You're going to have to detain.
Who, the individual?
The individual developers, that's the first step. Each individual site that redevelops, and we're having a lot of them coming through, every time they redevelop, they're going to have to put detention on every one of their sites. That's going to start that little pecking away. Slowly but surely, we're moving towards that. Detention ponds like Brookhaven, that's another one. Areas may come up where we find buildings that people are going to sell that may be available. Potentially, that might be something we look at, buying and then putting a detention pond. But what you're going to have to do... Oh, that was Indian, I'm sorry. Well, we need to look at the city overall and find tributaries, because putting a detention pond on a mainstream like Farmer's Branch Creek is not going to work. It's not going to work. What we have to do is we have to catch it before it gets there. We have to get the little tributaries and have a number of different ponds to collect that water, detain that water, hold that water, and let it out slowly. That way, we decrease the amount of water going down the stream. And that's the plan that I have moving forward. Trying to do that, trying to look for options, trying to find places where we can do that. Developments coming in, we may require certain things of them to put in different things. So it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but it's something we can start chipping away at, and over a period of time, we'll get there. But it's very difficult to make it happen overnight.
That's kind of the crux of the discussion, because, I mean, the path we're going right now, in listening to council, is that we need to have a plan to control that flow in the future. And right now, given the tools we have, you know, we can, as new development on the east side comes along, we can require them to have a higher standard where they have to actually more than offset the runoff that they create when they redevelop that property. You know, as Mark just showed, there's not been a lot of change over 50 years on the east side. Now granted, we are having some nibbles, but, you know, I think we all agree, that would be a very long-term approach. If we're looking for a quicker solution, really what you're talking about, given that there's not a whole lot of, other than Brookhaven College, there's not really a whole lot of green space in that area, what you'd be talking about is us using eminent domain, either going and trying to buy the property or using eminent domain and acquiring the property and creating green space and more detention structure. And if that's what the council wants to know, we need to know that, because that's a very different thing, and that will cost money.
But that's just for our limited contribution to that map that he showed. There's a lot more that's coming in from outside of our area of...
20%. There's 20% that comes from that whole basin, there's 20% that comes from Addison, and there's really nothing we can do.
And we can't do anything about that.
And actually, I have been, because some of the new developments, I required them to already do detention.
But there is Mark, because...
Alongside Addison.
UDR is already, as I understand from the last meeting, UDR is already talking about, we can put in a, what do you call it?
Vault.
A vault? Not the wall, no, it's the basin where they dig in and they put...
Detention pond.
The vault.
A vault, okay, a vault.
Not the vault, the vault. And so I think we can work with Addison. You know, we have some leverage right now, because they really want the Beller Road. And both sides have been open, so I'm optimistic there.
And like I said, I have been, I've already, projects that have come through, I've already required Addison to do detention. I said, "You're not putting any more water in there than what's already going in there, you know." So we have started that process. And there again, anybody who ties into one of our systems like that, we can require whatever we want. However, if they tie directly into the creek through their system, well, we don't really have any flexibility there, but the other stuff we do is good.
So my understanding, too, and this is something that Charles contributed, due to the legislature, we have to have a drainage plant in by September 1st. This can be very general, based on what we see other cities doing.
Correct.
But after that, what you're saying is you're going to take the time and staff to really look at these, you know, requiring vaults for new development and looking at all these options, maybe it is eminent domain, to give us options. How long do you think that's going to take?
Well, I think we're probably looking at, before the end of the year, why don't we find a plan?
Like six months out, yeah.
Well, but if we want to have a plan, say, use 40 acres, because that's the number that Freeze Nichols initially threw out, is, I mean, if we want to have... Because right now, I remember, and for those of you that remember the Nathan Meyer study, the Nathan Meyer study also said that's kind of the key, there must be like, I think, 11 to 13 detention ponds. But if that's something council wants to do, that would be a study we need to engage Freeze Nichols to actually identify ideal locations and then pursue that. That's something we need direction from council, because that's a more aggressive approach.
And I think we have, you know, another opportunity within that, and that is, is we're going to put a lot of people on the east side. We're a city in a park, and we don't really have a park on the east side, right? And we have the ability to, I believe, you know, to find a way to tie those two together, and maybe it's not 40 acres. If we did half of it, and it was 20 acres, and then we do the Beller Road and some other things, then, you know, it's significant, not a Band-Aid, you know, in terms of a plan, you know, for the future and to do that. And, you know, and I think we have a financial leverage that we can do with the park and taking, you know, trading park space, right? And come back over and take some of our current park space on, you know, in the central area, and potentially converting that into some commercial to offset some of those costs.
You want to like Farmer's Branch Park?
Yeah.
Let me just, I want to tag on to that before we go. So I think Mike's right. Here's my position. We can't dismiss any options at the start. So I'm not saying that eminent domain's the right thing to do. I know it's expensive, I know it's traumatic, you know, but it's an option. And if we dismiss it at the outset, then we're going down a path that's suboptimal. So let's look and see, what's the optimal path? What are the costs, what are the pros, what are the cons? And then we can make an informed decision. That's where I'm coming from. And I'll end up by complimenting Mark, because Mike and I attended a Corps of Engineers training session about a year ago, and they said exactly the same thing. And at that time, the NOAA study was underway, it wasn't finished, but they said, "It's coming." And I think, you know, they recommended, the Corps recommended, that we design no longer for the 100-year storm, that we have to design for the 200-year storm. That's the new norm, that's the new state of things. And so I think with your approach with the NOAA data will give us a much better footing to then require people and have a case to go back and say, "We're not doing this because we're mean and ugly, and we're doing this because it's the best for you." You know, and so I like this approach, but I don't want us to dismiss any option. There's eminent domain, there's, you know, it's already been talked about, TIF on the east side. There's, you know, we know that the building things are very active over there with these warehouses and stuff. Maybe we could swing some kind of deal with them. There's, you know, trading park space, I like that idea. And using our funding and going to the citizens and saying, "Look, you know, this could be a huge problem, not just for people on Farmer's Branch Creek or Cooks Creek or Rock Creek, but for the entire city."
The idea of yours, we're talking about the 40 acres. Well, if you start looking at each individual development as it redeveloped, I know that takes time, but if you start to... That really starts whittling down that requirement for 40 acres, because if each individual one is doing their own little thing, well, the overall is being taken care of, and maybe that ends up being 10 acres.
Yeah, but the issue here is that...
Time's running.
It's time.
It's time, right.
And if you, the slides you just showed, if you should, over 50 years, it ain't changed much.
But I think it is right now changing quicker than we can get some of that implemented, but, yeah, it's not changing quick enough.
So I talked to my wife this morning, and she's on this cruise, and she's stopping in, she stopped yesterday in this little town in Iowa. She's bored to tears. And what she said was, she goes, "I was walking through this town, and they talked about..." You know, she goes, "They talked about..." They asserted to a specific woman, but a city council and everything, that, you know, 70 or 80 years ago, I didn't get the exact date, but took an area that was being mined and said, "Wait a second, this is a beautiful area." And they, you know, they went out and they had the courage to say no to the development and the money that probably came with it, and they kept it. And it's one of the things that they talk about. We have an opportunity to do something that will last for a century or more, you know, and correcting and fixing a real challenge. And I think it will be hard, you know, but I think it's something that is right, and it's something that we should try to find a way to do.
Council, we've not dismissed this approach, but the reason we haven't really looked at it is because, I mean, using, is ultimate, I think you will have to use eminent domain, because those warehouses are full and they're profitable.
Sure.
And that's a really, really, really aggressive approach. And we should have a, we have to look at it hard, because that's not, we've never that verbalized by council. And thankfully, I'm glad we're hearing that today, because that's something that we could, we're going to need to engage Freeze Nichols to do it, and then one more study. But to do a study, and this one hopefully won't take that long, because we just need to find geographically, where is the most optimal place for a 20-acre park or two 10-acre parks?
Yeah, exactly.
And then we'll just start down the road.
You know, and there's things like the, what is it, Tuesday Morning, where they park all those vehicles, and it's an environmental cleanup place.
Yeah.
Maybe we do that one. You know, maybe that wouldn't be so problematic.
Correct, and Throwman, I mean, Councilwoman Rotana has had experience in a city that has, I mean, there's a number of vaults that the city of Dallas has put in. Now, they're huge and they're expensive, and I love that we need something quite that large, but that's something, when you're starting to hire a 10- or 20-acre area, you can do that.
But it does what it needs to do, right?
It does, you know, Spring Valley or Midway, I mean, there's plenty of...
You know, Tuesday Morning has been off and on for sale, and I've met with the developer that lives in your neighborhood that had an option on that at one point, talked about his vision for mixed-use development, and we talked about adding green space there, so, I mean, that's a real possibility.
So if y'all are verbalizing us what you want, we can move down that path and get the study done, and then come back with the cost and how to take care of that.
Yeah, and we did something similar in Dallas where we did the exact same thing. It wasn't for park space, it was to try and buy out some of those areas to redevelop. And it was basically a map, and it showed where the multifamilies were and everything, so it kind of gave us options as to where, what our best options were, because if there's going to be an area that doesn't have any walkability, then you don't want to put a park there, right? So, but it was really neat for them, because our homeowners, they can do that. I mean, they can let us know when the leases are up and all that. So I think we definitely should.
If I could, our forefathers had the same thought. It's called Camelot, I am Phil. And they go like that. But I want to sort of shift gears for just a second, if I could, on this slide, because I was one who had mentioned to you that we probably needed to hire a second engineer just to handle the water issues, because you're stretched to the max. And so obviously, if we can get the same type of service without having to bring somebody, additional personnel on staff and pay our benefits and whatnot, and if that $30,000 will deliver that, that's going to be way cheaper than us bringing another staffer on. That's number one. But number two is, let's talk about Freeze and Nichols for a second. And you asked Mark about his confidence level in the projects that's taking place. I want to ask about the confidence level of Freeze and Nichols. And are they truly trying to help us remedy a bad situation, a problem? Or are they in the business to keep selling us different services, selling us something else, selling us on the hope that someday we're going to fix this issue? Because I'm sort of looking at, when are we going to be done with Freeze and Nichols? Or is that just always going to be the case? Because we continue to pay them money after money after money, and there's got to be some end in sight to some of this.
Well, I understand. I have total confidence in Freeze Nichols and what they can do. They are one of the better firms in the area to provide these type of services. I have no doubts whatsoever about that. I think even hiring another firm to do a third-party review on their, and they, we found no issues, despite the way they would go, everything is good. These things, it's not, they are not coming to me and saying, "I can sell you this." I'm asking them, "What can I do, what can we do?" And then they bring up, "Well, we are doing this for this city. Do you want to see it looking at providing it for your city?" So it's not, they're not trying to sell me a lot of stuff in order to make more, matter-of-fact, we see, than in one of the proposal, I mean, in the presentations, the study session. I told them, I said, "Well, talk about the drainage plan." And they even told me, "I don't feel comfortable staying up here trying to sell our service." And that's when I took over, because I knew that's what we needed to do. So, yes, they are not out here trying to sell what they do. If I ask the question, "What do you have, what are you doing?", they tell me, "Here's what we're doing." It just so happened, we use City of Plano Drainage Manual. They are currently, right now, redoing City of Plano's Drainage Manual at the same time. So I'm piggybacking off of that, but modifying it to fit us. So in the same thing, they're doing this for a lot of big cities, a lot of major cities, and they're well-known for doing that. Now, I have other consultants that I use for other things. I don't use them explicitly for everything. I use O'Brien Engineering, right now they're designing part of the eight projects. Freeze and Nichols is not, O'Brien Engineering is. I still use Nathan Meyer for reviews of flood studies and stuff through the city. So I'm using different engineers, they're not the only ones. I try not to keep all my bread in one basket with one engineer. I like to spread it around. However, when it comes to consistency in what we're doing, Farmer's Branch Creek, they did the study, I like to keep moving, I like to stay with them on most of the issues. Now, I didn't get them, like I said, I didn't get them to design some of their own projects that they highlighted. I picked somebody else, because I wanted to get a fresh eye to it also. "Do you see something different that we can do, save some money?" "Well, tell me about it." But at the same time, but using them as a consultant, if they've already got a model that's basically been approved by TCU, why not use them? Why try to go back over here and reinvent the wheel? If you've got something that's working, that's working for 10 to 15 other cities, why not piggyback on that and make that happen and make it work for us? So that, yes, I have total confidence in what they're doing. I'm not saying I'm going to use them for everything, but consistency is what we're looking for. They did the study, so we want to continue to use them to a point that makes sense. They did the study, so we want to continue to use them to a point that makes sense.
It might be good to just show briefly, Robert, I don't know if you want to talk about the last meeting with UDR since we've.
I have one comment on what you just brought up. Is it possible that, or is it maybe desirable that when we have so much of this work and it's so important and it needs to be done quickly, that maybe we double the workload of the stormwater consultant, raise that to 50 or 60,000? That's, you know, the budget dust as far as this budget goes. And get this, really get an emphasis on this entire area.
Well, actually, this, this portion of the right here is pretty limited. Like I said, they've already got the model, it's a set work scope that they're going to be doing. You really can't double it or make it higher, make them do more. Where it comes down to, where we're going to spend more on consultants is here, designing the projects and doing additional studies. That's where we're going to spend more. This right here is really not where we're going to need to spend more, it's up here. So, because we still got projects designed, we still got studies.
The point being, move faster on getting these studies done and so we can move.
That's what I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get, I don't want to leave Mark short. I mean, there, you've got a lot of your place, I understand that. And so I'm trying to say, now's the time, if we're going to make an adjustment in the budget, I mean, 30K, another 30K out of 1.2 or 122 million, we can move that money.
Well, in reality, I'd love to have all the help in the world. But when I really stop and think about it, there's only, there's only so much that can be done. I mean, I mean, without causing, because then, even if I had another consultant and more consultants doing more stuff, it's just all going to boil down to me and my project engineer having to review the stuff. And so there's still going to be a little bit, but for the next couple of years, I think we can accomplish everything now. What I'll do is on these projects, I will have a couple of consultants, maybe three, working on these projects. Designing them. And they'll be responsible for those projects. And we'll review the plans, we'll issue out, we'll bid it and everything else, and we'll keep moving on down the road. I am going to push this as fast as I can.
But Mark, I think the thought here is on two things. The drainage manual and the optimization of where the detention pond should be. Could those be done, say, in the next six to nine months?
Oh, yes, the drainage manual would be done by the end of the year.
But that second one too, that I'm talking about.
I think it can too, because Freez and Nichols has 200 engineers.
Because I think that's, that's.
They can pull people in.
Right. I've been trying to help you out.
No, I understand, I'm not trying to push them.
Put down the shovel, stop digging. I think we need to add whatever resources we need to this area to accelerate it as quickly as possible.
He's got room under this lane, you could reappropriate some of your own dollars from this lane. It's too.
Yeah, we could.
We won't let this stop us. If we, if we run into a restraint, dollar restraint, then what I'm going to do is come back to council and say, hey, we got, we've talked about having general fund money, balance money that we can move over to either front this or just throw it over there to be done.
Because the investment here and the payoff is much fairer than.
I hear you. So this will not restrict us, we'll come back.
And the other thing I would, I would like to see is, you know, we do, we're basically spending all, we're waiting three years. And, you know, that we're going to cycle in and we know ultimately we're going to need money. I'd like to see us front load and finish these projects. You know, maybe two years, I personally would like to find a way to drive them along the first year. And, you know, so that the future stormwater funding is available to help finance this next big thing, because it's.
One option there, you know, we've talked about having, what, four to five million dollars over our target fund balance level when we talked about that. And there were a lot of options for what to use that money for. We talked about, could it be used for a barn? Could it be used to buy a hard corner of Valley View and I-35? But, you know, an option would be, hey, forget all that. Take $2 million and transfer it over for stormwater projects, that, we could do that.
And while I'm a proponent of the barn, this to me is significantly long-term more important of resolving quickly and delaying a barn, you know, type thing.
But if that's what you want to do, tell us and we can modify the budget accordingly.
Here's where I'm going to agree with Mark, because sometimes in engineering projects, more, more money upfront doesn't move it faster. So, you know, we wanted, here's what I'm going to recommend. We got a Thursday session, why don't we take that item, the barn, anything else that comes up and have an hour-long discussion on if we had these nine things to do, how would we allocate that formula?
I will make this thing, if anything within my department, if I had $5 million a day to go do this, okay? I would go hire as many engineers it would take to design it all, give me plans and have it being built. Where my problem comes in is having an inspector to inspect it. We're very strung out on inspectors right now. We don't, you know, we cannot keep good inspectors and we only have two to cover the entire city. Everything we do, everything. That's permits for franchise utilities, that's development, that's public worksup. There are things there that if I had, I wish I would get somebody else to help me in that lower area of permits and to help somebody inspect, have another person in that aspect to take the load off the inspector. So we can design $5 million for the projects and go out there and let's tear the creek up all in one year. But I don't have enough people to watch the projects going off, so we would miss. That's where my problem is.
This contractor opportunity there too.
And having available contractors, if they were all available, ones that do it, yes.
Yeah, it just comes down to.
It just comes down, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something, I mean, we should get a sense of council, I think we're getting a stronger sense of council.
So that's where it all comes down.
Yeah, there's a way to do that on a part-time basis, that would be great if there's, you know, rather than a full-time person that, like you said.
Well, like I said.
Three years, their workload tails off.
You can use, you can always get a contractor with the engineer, it's just going to cost us more.
Yeah, I got you.
But it'd be temporary.
It'd be temporary for that project only and it'd be done.
Don't, don't take any option off the table, that's, that would be what I would say.
I try not to, but there again, I always have a hard time. Like saying I'm, I don't want to burden the city for employees or something that are going to, in long-term, not be, you know, efficient.
But there's other options.
But there are, but that's why I have a hard time asking, that's why we talked about and said this engineer, I said, three years? What are we going to do with it? And that's why it's like, we need to change the game plan and look at other options and go.
And I'll bring this up just because we mentioned it. So one of the things I wanted to talk about was adding an inspector as an FTE because even people are, just the window, because y'all, there's so much development going on, just the window that people have to wait. I mean, you can't expect somebody to wait five hours for an inspector to come, I mean, that's half a day's work. And so I actually, one of that questions that I had in my notes coming up to this meeting is how much would an FTE for an inspector cost? Because it didn't even matter adding all these projects, just right now, I feel like we do need another inspector at least just to kind of dwindle down that window, because that's, that's a lot, because there's so much development going on right now.
But I will tell you, the concern I have is just like Mark mentioned, is that you can't, based on your business cycle, you can't hire than fire, hire than fire, that's not fair to the employee.
No, and I get that, so you mentioned, but you mentioned, you know, for a contractor though, we would still need to know how much it would cost for someone, how much we would offer a contractor, for example. Because let's say, right, let's say we do it for, on a year, maybe we do it for two years, maybe we do it for one year. I would still like to know how much that costs and where we could.
Oh, yeah, that, total support.
Yeah, 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 no, not long-term, because after we're built out, I mean, we're not going to need this person.
Okay, you said FTE.
Sorry, 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 I will, FTE, I just, how much it would cost to add another person.
To add, to add somebody on a contract basis.
To add somebody on a contract basis. And I know it'd be easier because we don't have to worry about, you know, all of the benefits and all that. But, but that's something that I had on my list, just because here people that if they're waiting four or five hours, just because there's so much demand.
Correct. It's the same concept we use on, on the building inspection side. That, you know, we have, because they're subject to the same cycles. And we, we actually, I think, three, three firms that we're using that provide the contract support to allow, you can, you know, if someone wants an expedited permit, we can do that through a contractor. So we can do the same thing on the construction inspection side as well.
I think construction and building, and I think we need to also think about, I also, also think we need to think about, you know, just the allocation, you know, you have a minimum, because if we are giving people five hours, you know, window, we need to at least say, okay, just three hours. And if, based on demand, we can contract that out, because right now, I can tell you instances where people are waiting five hours to get an inspection. And not having somebody, you know, wait that long, that's a half day's work, that's maybe sometimes a whole day's work.
With a contractor, we could have, we could have performance criteria that.
Performance criteria, perfect, okay.
John, to your point too about Thursday's discussion, I think it would be helpful if we kind of framed our discussion deliverable expectations, this is what we, this is timeframe that we expect this to happen and then back that up, then what would that mean in the budget? Would that mean more contractors, what would exactly would that mean? But I think if we can get to, this is what we expect by this time, I think that would drive, start there and drive it up.
Yeah, that's good. You know, and how we allocate the dollars, just reasonable.
Yeah.
But we've got to get the ideas out there, we've got to, you know, look at everything together.
Yeah.
And not just say, well, historical park wants a park. Well, of course they do, they can want a park too.
I'm going to jump over the library and just finish up my course on it and turn it over to Ben.
Okay. Perfect. You think you're going to get on there.
That's what I'm trying to get out. Anyway, I, I'm not, I'm trying to do this for Shane and I'm just going to run through what he's got here. I don't know a lot about it, so sorry if I can't answer your question.
Shane is coming tomorrow.
Yeah, he's, he's not getting back until.
If there are open questions.
Okay. Camelot landfill, the scale house and maintenance facility, city costs 5.5 million dollars. Any additional costs will go through Republic Services. The scale house is scheduled to be operational August 19th. Maintenance facility is scheduled to be completed December 27th. Trails, bond CIP. Bond funds are being used to construct the marshaling sidewalk expansion and bird paving east trail. Those are both out for construction. Reimbursement from Dallas County and Tech dot will be backed into the bond fund once it's, once they're completed. Contract with Kim Lee Horn for Midway Road pedestrian crossing. Feasibility study and the design of 10 intersections. That's been approved by city council on February 5th and for the amount of $418,700. Midway Road conceptual plans and traffic analysis will be presented to P&amp;Z on August 26th and it'll go to city council. The next steps.
Question about that, because there was, there was a meeting, I'm not going to ask you, I'm going to ask.
Okay.
There was a meeting about the Midway Road project.
Yes.
And I actually thought when I went to this meeting, because Bronson had talked about pedestrian bridge and whatnot, there was no mention of a bridge. What there was, was basically reduction of lanes on Midway Road. And the general consensus that I got when I walked out of there was not just no, but a really strong no from those who attended. And so the money, this $418,000, has that already been spent? Or at some point, we need to have a conversation to see whether this is really worthwhile to pursue or are we just wasting money?
Yeah, okay, two-part deal. The, a bridge over Midway would be heinously expensive. So the, and outside the realm of the dollars we have with trails. So what Kimberly Horn is looking at is a, at a major intersection, and Ben is the one that is spitting that up. But the, they're looking at how to create an intersection that is safe for folks to go across. But as part of that, as part of that intersection review, Kimberly Horn was looking at, okay, you've got a really wide road that narrows on the Dallas side and the Addison side narrows by one lane. And should, and that it's really overbuilt, it's too wide for the traffic volume. And so as part of that, they looked at, okay, should we have a discussion about, is that, that's part of that discussion. And so the $400,000 wasn't just for, for that, but, so that's why they had that stakeholder meeting to try and determine, you know, is that, is that even something that people would be interested in? And the information I got back is that not many people attended that particular meeting.
Not many attended, it was not representative of the area.
And so that, at some point, that's going to come back to council, see if there's an appetite from council standpoint. You know, because in terms of, you know, Addison is putting trails down one side of Midway, which will have widened sidewalks. Our sidewalks are fairly narrow. If we want to tie into Addison, the wider sidewalk would require the reduction of a lane. So that's.
One thing that really wasn't discussed at very much length was the fact that the whole Blue Lake development and all those residents needing to get out onto access to Midway, to 635 or whatnot. You're adding traffic, Blue Lake, you're adding two more multifamily developments that Williams Lee's been allowed to build. They're not here today, but they will be. So that east side is going to change. And the fact that we've got four lanes in each direction is helping to move traffic out, reducing.
Moving out to where?
Well, going, going in both directions.
But it closes down.
The, the, the main issue that I heard was that it's taking, it takes too long for an individual, for a pedestrian to walk across eight lanes of traffic yet from one side to the other. Well, that can be a, a wide timing issue and adjusting that versus reducing it to three lanes in each direction and just making a wider pedestrian way. That was not well received by those that were in attendance. And it wasn't, you had people that were on P&amp;Z that were there, you had real estate agent, you had a couple of other people on other boards that were there, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see us, I think that the intent of that was just to kind of get some stakeholder input. Quite frankly, in terms of, you know, when we have limited resources for trails, I would, I would tend to argue that the cost of reducing Midway down is an expensive endeavor. And do we really want to move, use our trail money that way? So I don't see that going further. But the consultant was trying to kind of get a feel for, you know, is that some of the people even interested in? I mean, they're, they're having stakeholder meetings, you know, whenever we're having major potential changes in the trail system, we're trying to have stakeholder meetings where we get the input and see, okay, is this something positive or negative? So that was, that's part of the process.
Well, so my take in sitting there and listening to all that was just, that is probably not something that we should be spending more money on. Because there is not really a seat. But, you know, Shane will be here tomorrow and we can ask him as, as part of his discussion because I think the people were pretty clean that evening.
Yeah, but, 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 you know, this council has talked about road diets throughout the city, whether it be on Valley View, whether it be on Midway. And I think the consensus I got was definitely I didn't. So that's, we're going down that road to speak. But just be aware that, you know, if, if, if council is not happy with road diets, because part of road diets is getting people under, into alternative means of transport by making them a little bit more uncomfortable being in a car. And if that's not where council wants to go, if you, if you don't want road diets, because this would fall into the road diet policy, then we probably need to know that. But the stakeholder meetings, where we find that out.
I also sat in a meeting before I was ever elected to council, where they talked about putting Valley View on a road diet.
Yeah.
And the reason being was for all the bicycles. And the question was, where are all the bicycles? And, because they're not there now. And somebody said, well, if we build it, they'll come.
They are, they're just at like 5 o'clock in the morning. That's when you have to be riding. When that's, yes, they're there.
I do see them too.
They're there.
From Brooklyn, everything's thick.
So maybe on a Saturday morning, I see them. It'll be a group of them, but I don't think I see enough of them to warn today.
Can I suggest that we're way off track and we tee this up for a study session discussion?
Sure.
Because, I mean, are we here to, we're here about the budget, right? So.
Well, that's fine. Yes, fine.
Okay. Trails, non-bond CIP. $100,000 per year in the general fund as part of the city's matching funds for the West Side Art Trail, five years through 2023. West Art Trail alignment is completed, waiting on hydrology, hydrology study for the bridges. Next step, we'll be in contact with Kim Lee Horn for the construction documents and 100% plan. And that is.
Get back to the library.
And that will go back to the library and turn this over to Ben. All you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are, library.
We are, library. And so first I wanna talk about the maintenance that's happening at the library right now in this year. And so this was lost on the priority list last year because there was potential for a bond and we didn't wanna do maintenance if the library was going to be rebuilt. And so what you're gonna see this year is both library parking lots, you're gonna see pictures of those here as well. So there's the one next to the fire station and also the one that's part of the library where it sits. You can see just the overall condition of those features as well. And the one that's by the fire station does hold water, so there's a lot of areas for improvement in those areas for our residents. The other part's going to be the roof and the HVAC system, not a great way to show the condition or picture that, but there's the roof. A list of the different items and what they will cost and the budgetary impact for those as well. So next steps.
So you're, you're installing a vault here, right?
Not at this time. It acts as one mission.
Shouldn't we install a vault since we're adding more pavement that's gonna fold right into.
Right.
Are we, are you, are we talking about the, the parking across the street, we're gonna redo that parking?
Yeah, you just fix an existing pavement, right?
It's an overlay, isn't it?
Market, I just think. I know, it's a repair and overlay.
I mean, that's a, that's a long-term commitment that we're not ever gonna do anything with that property. Just leave it there as a long-term parking lot, which I think is.
But is that, but unfortunately, because that, the bond didn't pass, I mean, that's what we're left with, right?
We could, we could expand the parking lot on the library side.
See, and I, I wouldn't be okay, I would not wanna take away park, that original park space, like a lot of people use that park space right there.
You get ample park space, but.
Yeah, there's ample, I mean.
As part of the.
There's a third of it, or something in there.
Yeah.
On the conceptuals, when we were going through the bond discussion, a lot of the discussion did involve expanding the parking over here as well. And there were creative ways to do that, to still hold them to the trail, so anything's possible, it's just the direction we wanna go. But the parking lot next to the fire station is the one that has much more issues as far as just being there. One is across the street, two, it does hold a significant amount of water, it's got more deterioration.
I just think there are, I, I mean, that's a key corner and to make it a permanent parking space, I think is a.
My opinion is that's a bad decision.
And maybe, maybe I misheard council, but the direction that the council gave staff after we took the Henry S. Miller project off the table on a permanent basis was that this was going to continue to be a parking lot. And the, the parking lot was, has been identified a number of times as being, well, the reason we haven't approved it in the past is because we were thinking about a Henry S. Miller type project. And now that that's off the table, you know, that's been identified as a major problem and so we're just talking about resurfacing it. That, that was my understanding from the, that council meetings. Well, that's, we, I, I thought that discussion was driven by the fact that we wanted, you know, we were gonna talk about that and then the idea of moving the library potentially over there. You know, shut it down, I mean, I mean, if I'm the only one thinking that we should do something different with that, even if we just let it be used for what it's already zoned for, which is selling to somebody to build four or five houses on.
And we've talked about that as an option after the library did, bond didn't pass. We talked about what are we gonna do now with that space?
Yeah.
Cause the day it didn't pass, Henry S. Miller called and said, all right, what's the plan? We'll build what's done, what it's zoned for or we'll build senior living, which we had a motion to sell them the property for. And I thought the direction that we had at that time is nothing, let's not do anything.
Permanently, yeah.
Not permanently, I thought we agreed that we were just let the, hold on to that land, let this thing calm down. Restore some calm to the city and go ahead with library improvements and renovations as necessary.
But in the meantime, you have awful parking lot.
Okay, and that's fine. And if we're gonna hold that land for five years and it's gonna cost X number of dollars to, to repave that side of it, you know, or overlay. Then you advertise that in five years, it might be worth it, just for, from a convenience standpoint.
Kind of a thought.
That's, yeah, but, but at some point in the future, that may, or a future council may have a different plan for that property. I wonder what Bronson thinks, that's your, your district, right?
I have no choice, no, cause I got neutered on this, so.
You can't even say, give an opinion of what the residents would think about.
You know, you know, in the, in talking to residents, they're, they were opposed to anything that was four stories, their privacy, looking in their backyard. You know, I'm not sure that they would have any issues with a smaller development of houses, I have to, you know, kind of round them back up again. But, you know, talking about the parking being expanded on the other side, that was, that idea has been vetted for damn near ten years now. And it's not like we took apart an area that was, you know, used, it's kind of a swampy spot as you kind of approach. It, the street's a little higher and it lets water sit in that grass right there between the, the lower right hand, or left hand portion of this picture, so that's where the parking was gonna go. It's not like we were gonna put, you know, bump it out and take the train and all that stuff out of the way. So it, I don't want people, and that's what they thought, but once they saw the plan that was put, put forth, it was, you know, it was okay. And people have, have accepted it, but have, have always complained about having to walk across the street. They've complained for a long time about it, so, you know, there's, 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 there's people on all sides of this fence and there's like four or five sides of the fence if you wanna kinda, you know, talk about it. But, you know, I would think that the, you know, the residents are gonna, you know, are gonna, there's gonna be a group that's upset no matter what's done. But, you know, I guess my take on what we decided the other, or a couple of months back was that we were just gonna kind of let it cool off and let this library consultant kind of give us a report and then eighteen months, you know, the report may say, hey, don't spend six or eight million dollars, you know, refurbishments, you need to move out, we don't know. And if that's the, the report that we get, the council at that time's gonna have to make the decision to eat the advice of the report and put it back out or, or to continue down the path with the, the building that we have. So that was my understanding as to why we were gonna, you know, hang on to the land for a little while, you know. But it, you know, it's the, it's in dire repair, you know, it's tripping hazards and whatnot, that's the last thing we want is residents to trip and fall and you know, especially seniors, you know, break brittle bones or whatnot, so it's, that's kind of my, my take on it. But like I said, when it comes down to actually voting on anything or publicly, I've, I've got zero opportunity to say.
I kind of cite material here on this one about the, if we can amortize this thing, it's the, the library thing, even if we go forward with it as a consultant, it's two or three years down the road. So resurfacing may be the best option, I think Kevin's here, so we can, we'd have to redesign that parking lot and the space and have a surveyor and all that kind of stuff right there.
Actually, that part of the cost is just to go in and repair and resurface.
Yeah, we put that, we put the new little, little thing at this.
Oh yeah, we changed it?
Yeah, we changed our design right now, it'll cost more just to, cause they go up right there, right?
Or to go out there now, that'd be, I think Public Works has looked at that.
We've got a, there's a plan that they floated back in twenty sixteen with a library bond question.
It's been designed.
It's been, it's completely designed.
Henry S. Miller designed that as part of, you know, the senior housing across the road.
Cause what the point was that they were gonna sell the land for the value that it was costing to expand the parking lot, so it was kind of a wash point or whatnot. And obviously, you know, that was in twenty sixteen, then the bond committee, so obviously things have changed price-wise now, so it's.
For both.
Oh man, for all of it, yeah.
I was about to say, if the property is ever sold in the future, that that can also be a discussion point, if that means the parking would disappear. And amortization over several years is a lower amount if you look at it in that lens, so. But at the end of the day, the state of the parking lot is something that we feel needs to be addressed, especially the one across the street, it's, it's pretty bad.
If, if I'm alone, I'll draw my concern.
We, we have to have claims against us where we have citizen hurt themselves in the parking lot and it's gonna do our interest, so it's, it's definitely a hazard.
But the, this, this, didn't we have someone trip and fall on the sidewalk recently, breaking our house and employee, right?
No, it was a citizen.
Oh, it was a citizen, okay.
Yeah.
So we need to do something, is that what I'm hearing? I mean, I hear what you're saying, Mike, but truthfully, you know, this thing's, it'll just blow up again and we'll be dealing with, you know, another group of angry citizens and it's just a distraction. So I'd rather just walk away, let the library thing play out over a series of years when it looks like we need to resurface.
And there it is, budgeted and ready to go. So that's the maintenance of the library and the surrounding area. The next step is what's next for the library? And so currently there's an RFQ out right now for the library, it closes in about a week. And what it's really looking for is a needs assessment, I'll go into the details in a little second, this gives you your timeline as well. So this is live right now, we did have one company come out and tour the library and look at it with us. Once, it was a two-person team, one was a former director in the Dallas Public Library System and then also an architect that had teamed up to have this discussion as well. It's multi-year, it's not being rushed, we're taking it slow to really try and figure out what the process looks like and make sure they're gonna deliver a product we need. And so in the RFQ, it really focuses on stakeholders involved in the whole community. So it's gonna look at the education community, the business community, the resident community, everybody in Farmers Branch, our stakeholders. And so very strong language about how a stakeholder analysis needs to happen involving those groups and engaging those groups in the discussion. We talked earlier about the resident satisfaction survey, we want more than that for, on these projects, so we're really looking for ideas. And so we challenged the folks that would be looking at RFQ to really tell us how they're going to get the community involved in this discussion. They're gonna look at the services that are provided, are we providing the right services for our residents? They're gonna look at the space and how it's organized, financial analysis and then implementation plan. So the implementation plan takes everything above it and puts it on a tiered, almost like a pyramid, here's the low hanging fruit. Here's what we can do quickly, cheaply and really start to make improvements to the library over multiple years and kind of bring it back to you all, say, hey, here's an implementation plan. Not just, here's where the library needs to be, it's gonna be, here's the analysis of the library, where it is, where it could be. Here's the implementation plan, this recommendation for moving forward, multi-years, multi-stages, slow change, progressive change, maximize utility of the library. And so you're like, well, what does that look like? Prior to the library bond discussion, you also got to see a quorum architect presentation about what the library could look like on the outside. And so these are some of the conceptual arts for it, what it would be as far as the bricks and how we treat the bricks, cause it does have an older look to it, some public art. And then how the outside would change as well, toward this parking would move, be gone and make it kind of engaging outdoor space, fit our theme of a city in a park. And those are some of the conceptual, so you saw it from the aerial, here's what we currently have and this is what was proposed.
And, and I'd love to make a shameless plug here, food for thought. The seven forty-six, two hundred, you know, we talked about, send that aside a page ago, future library renovations, whatever that might be. Don't, okay.
Yes, I check my chart and have more pictures.
The, the cost, now, when, and this is a couple of years old, but the cost of facade improvements, the applying a, a certain type of treatment to change the color of the, of the brick, I won't call it paint, cause Bronson will throw something at me.
No, it's okay, painting bricks fine.
Probably something that's grand with paint.
The cost of doing that, the cost of putting in the, taking out the parking and putting in the screen space. A two-year-old cost was roughly about one point one, one point two million bucks. The seven forty-six, two hundred is not that far off from that, I granted inflation's gonna cost, but I just wanna, as food for thought, that if council wanted sooner rather than later to at least do the facade and make it look pretty on the outside, we could do that, go quick.
You know, I think one of the things we've heard a lot during it is that, I call this lipstick on a pig, but that's my opinion. So people talked about the character, the design and the exterior and how they liked it. There were a lot of people that talked about how they liked it, but a lot of those people also were the anti-changers and whatnot, the people that are really resistant to change. So I think we need to kind of, you know, through community involvement, we need to weigh what we do and figure out, you know, I think doing anything in front of the results from the consultant is a waste of, of, of precious money. So that's just, you know, my kind of thought when it comes to, you know, it looks, looks great, but what if they come back and say, and, you know, and when the RFQ's back and it's all in, that, you know, this facility needs so much money worth of renovation to make it the library that the community is desire, desires from their involvement. That it just doesn't make sense, so I wanna make sure we don't, you know, go too far down the road that, you know, it's, would become wasteful.
Yeah, I just wanna throw that out for food for thought, because this would make it a much, and then quite frankly, the school district just approved this two years ago for all of their own facilities, the same type treatment. So, and, and they're going down that road, so this is not unusual or out of line, but just creating a facelift for an existing property. But I, council, I just wanna do, I just wanna give you that food for thought, that you could do this fairly inexpensively to make immediate impact as to what the approachable, approachability of the library looks like.
And we would have the RFQ back before this would actually be implemented as well.
On the RFQ, you know, we, you and I and Bronson talked yesterday and that appears there's only one respondent right now.
Only one that's for, and that's not uncommon when it's not mandatory, they don't show up for those.
Okay, and that the, the one that's the most desirable, the one that's done libraries all over Texas, that is not available right now. So I'm concerned that we're not gonna get the best on a timeline pushing forward and if we may say till eight, six months or re-advertise, we might be able to get the, the, the most, the highest ranked person.
When we looked at, I'm not sure that she was, it was advertised, her, I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Rixson and C, cause she did Arlington, Capella, the name that she did. She was involved in all of that, so I wanna make sure that, you know, someone of that type of, you know, stature is able to do it. And I, and you know, if it needs to, we need to slip it into a schedule, if it's her, I'm not opposed to that either, you know.
Any other thoughts? I mean, I'd, I'd rather get the right people involved and do it right than push a schedule that's artificial.
And I'll, I'll be with Bronson, I think that we need to come back with options so the community can really tell us what they want. Cause this is a completely different type of model than what we talked about at the last community, cause we were talking about bond, it's a completely different word. So I think we do need to have those meetings that Bronson mentioned and get community expertise for this.
Second, clear.
Perfect, so we've got the maintenance going forward and then this starts to build towards the tool to allow us to implement the RFQ that you'll definitely see the results from, but we'll make sure as staff that the RFQ gets strong responses from it. If we don't get strong responses, we'll do it again.
And in terms of logistics, you know, we talked about the roof, repair, the logistics of that, we were weighing a solar consultant. Cause that could be a potential spot for solar panels depending on how that works into that, so we're, we're aware of those logistics as well. Any other questions?
Excellent, thank you.
Is that it for the twenty-two here?
That's it, we're done.
Okay.
And we'll go ahead and recess until twelve thirty, because lunch can be served in there, it's time to get our food and start working for lunch.
Okay, everybody's on that now, we've got, that tape rolling, so we're gonna go to Chief Parker to talk about the fire department and how much we can cut.
Exactly.
Okay, guys, we're back.
Oh, thanks to council, Steve Parker, I'm here to present about the fire department's budget. I thought before we started getting into the nineteen twenty budget presentation, I wanted to review what we did in eighteen nineteen, actually almost a year ago to the day. Council made two significant sort of decisions that impacted the fire department. One was we adopted a fee schedule for fire inspections, so I wanna give you a little bit of update about what we're doing with that. Right now, when we were looking at it and projected our net revenue was a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, but what we could sort of bring in. Right now, fiscal year to date, we're sending it to seventy-five thousand, we believe we'll be able to finish out the year at ninety-seven thousand. That's a little bit off of what our projection was, we baked into the budget a hundred thousand in revenue, so we're, so pretty close off of that, that number right there. Yeah, I was, I was pleased with it, plus we had some hiccups going into it, we had about six weeks of a little bit of delay about implementing the inspection software. And during the year, we've had a, we had a significant FMLA leave issue with one of our inspectors that impacted our ability to collect revenue. But, but anyway, I think as we start looking into next year, we'll be up over that hundred thousand dollar number, which I know is very appreciative for Sherrell, cause she'd always call me about that.
I'm like, uh, excuse me, I was talking about these revenue numbers.
But, but this is where it's at, for me, I had one complaint regarding the inspection fee, come to my office, I know that the city manager had one complaint also, so I think it's been.
We're all very familiar with that one. So, so is she better?
Yeah, so, but I just wanna, again, this was, this was significant. So, but I just want to, again, this was, this was significant to be able to say, hey, go forward and do that, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on what that looked like. The other issue that you did last year and approved was changing to our fee schedule and how we bill for annual service. That came through with the rest of the changes that came through as regarded to revenue. A little bit of update on that, on the, I guess it's the left side here, you can look seventeen, eighteen, nine months, and then eighteen, nineteen, nine months of what that looks like as it relates to revenue. Right now, because of the changes, we're up three hundred and seventy-five thousand in collection, sorry, in billing, our actual collection is just about sixty thousand over what we were last year. The trip charge is up about two hundred and twenty-three a trip. That's twenty-three dollars in cash receipts. Our collection rate, though, is down, but because of the changes, our revenue is up. So we're ahead of where we were last year, which is a good thing. And then down here, this is the information we get back from our billing agents about what the player mix, the payer mix, looks like. So we made a change last year. We implemented the change. We're up on actual revenue from what we've received for that, and it's not a great rate. We're at thirty-three percent collection. So what we use to be able to offset that and to be able to come back to what we're collecting is we use the Texas Ambulance Supplemental Payment Program, or TASC, and that allows us to come back under the current way it was put together, is to look and be able to collect off of the historically underinsured in Medicaid and what the differences are. So we've been doing it since fourteen, and our revenue's been going up every year. Now, it came down in seventeen because of the way they changed the retention from the state. But this year, actually just last year, this last week, Chief Vargas, myself, and May from Finance, we sat down with our task consultant, and we're looking at a revenue piece here of about three hundred thousand, which is a big up. So not collected, we should see that again next year, about what that comes in. So, you know, you put this connected with what we collect, we're up around fifty percent collection, which is, which is, which is good.
How many more trips do we do in nineteen versus eighteen?
Well, we're up, so the total volume, we're up a hundred, a hundred costs?
Okay.
A hundred costs.
So less than ten percent, but our revenue's up more than ten percent.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it works, it's worked good. So again, feedback on what the agreement was from council, we will move forward. So this is where we're at. Going into this year, again, last year, we made commitments to the fire department for forty-two thousand dollars to allow us to implement NFPA fifteen eighty-two, fifteen eighty-three. That's the medical screening and the physical screening, specifically looking for cancer and heart disease. We completed that testing this year, and actually, and I remember thank you for it, two of our members had underlying cardiac disease that wasn't diagnosed. It was able to be caught during that screen, and they were able to be, get care, to be able to take care of it. That didn't manifest, it manifested itself on the fire room. It manifested itself during the medical screening. So thank you for that. In the budget, there is the forty-two thousand to be able to continue that program. And again, we're really trying to look after the health and welfare of our employees. Along with that is, in the budget, is a seventy-five thousand dollar ask to, it's for year one of three, to be able to get a second set of bunker gear for each of our firefighters. This is a great picture. This is a house fire we had in the fire repair. To be able to get the percentage and off of the employee, they decon themselves after the fire, they, obviously, the gears went and they have to go change it out. Right now, we have a set of bunker gear at station one that they share, and they'll go dig up a set and put it on to be able, where to finish the shift. We're looking at to be able to give them a second set of gear that's measured directly for them, kept at their station, to allow them to get back into service soon. So this is a request in our budget.
Just a quick question, not that I care about the seventy-five thousand, but is there, a lot of times you find there's grant programs where on these kinds of things, like for the body cams for the police, is there any kind of grant program for this kind of here?
We've used it. We used the grant, we're going to this year's safer, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. That is an assistance firefighter grant. That might be a little bit more of a tougher ask, because we couldn't do it. And again, this, this is something we can maybe for year two or three, see if we can go look for it that, that way. We have been in it this year, again, just to try to get these guys eating downs of the clean set of gear early. And Ben, did you talk about the citizen survey yet? Well, we did the employee survey also, and that was one of the issues that came in a little bit from our department, is I have the tools and equipment to do my job, and this is one of the issues of a chief. We get it. This is important. It doesn't help us to have to go and figure out a way to do it. So year one, and we can go look for next year to come back to using AFG money and see if we can clean it up. But again, we, we just need to do it over time, because these bunker gear sets only last so long, so you can't buy them all at once. You want to bring them in over time.
Mike, any questions?
Pardon me?
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry.
So, so I think I understand, is after the fire, you rinse it all off, so you're not breathing it and inhaling and all of that. Is that required after, like a kitchen fire? Or is that just a big fire?
Anywhere where you've got the production of soup, because that's just the number one carcinogen. Everything you have in a house now, or anything in this room, is made of plastic, and plastic is gasoline, and gasoline's a carcinogen. So we'll make them, we'll make them do this.
Yeah.
And, and make them get in, clean the gear. When they get back, they get out their gear, they decon the scene, they get back to the station, they shower, new uniforms, get new gear, go back into service. And that's sort of where we're at.
Did you, did you say there, each firefighter has its own?
Right now, no, right now, each firefighter has his own set of gear, and then we, so then we have, so say we have a hundred firefighters, and we have a hundred and twenty-five sets of gear. So that twenty-five sets of gear sit in station one, the extras, and then when they have a fire, they tear, if we get into a chemical, it allows them to be able to go to station one, find a set of gear, hey, that jacket and this pair of pants, and put it on. So it's not necessarily mates for them. What we're trying to do is to get them a second set made for them. So when they go back to their station, they can get the gear off, clean it, put the new set back on, and go right back to work and not have...
So you're purchasing seventy-five sets over three years?
Over three years. Yes, sir. A rescue tool, again, just another tool that sort of goes into our fleet of equipment that we use for sixty, a hundred. It's called a Strongarm, and we use it pretty well weekly to get into things. Now we're getting into vehicle replacement. Inside of the bus, it's three vehicles, and I'm working with my super friend over here, Kevin, about our replacement schedule. We're replacing the two thousand four Command Vehicle for sixty thousand five hundred. We have a twenty thirteen ambulance that's being replaced for two twenty-three. And the big piece is we're replacing two thousand and eight American Oil France Quint. And so when you look at the budget, you look at the delta for the fire department, this is the big, the big one right there, because we didn't buy the fire apparatus this year, so there's, there's a big difference.
So this is, if you get this new truck, it's going to push something back to reserve?
Yes. Yes. So this, the new Quint will be Quint one thirty-three on the left side, and then we'll have two reserves. We'll have a two thousand four Pierce engine and a two thousand seven Pierce Quint.
Okay. So the most recent purchase was the...
Truck one.
Big ladder truck.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And did that push something to reserve?
Yes. Now, we have, because for historical, we only have one reserve, and now we have two.
So we'll have two.
We have two. Yeah, and to be able to manage so fleet, so this...
Will, where will these reserve pieces of equipment be stored?
The reserve engine stays at station one, and the reserve Quint stays at station two. We have the extra base space there.
And then that'll fill up our reserve all of our space, yes?
Yes. And, and I think we're...
Because we won't have any extra bays?
No. Two, two reserves are what we need to be able to manage of, and I feel very comfortable with that. I feel very comfortable working with Kevin on that.
Now, I assume these don't really just sit around, they get exercised and they get cured a bit in?
A reserve, really, exactly, because we have a proactive maintenance schedule, or we've had to issue mechanical, we've had breakdowns, those engines come into service probably every week, there's a reserve piece somewhere running is pushed out. New fire station number two. When we adopted the budget to construct, to go into construction, we made an adjustment to the landscape plan and said, hey, as we come into the fiscal year budget, we'll be coming back and asking for money to be able to finish up the landscape and hardscape. It's four hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred, and we've identified the funding source to be able to come off on the sale of station two when it finally goes to market. Station two early is going along full speed ahead. We should be pouring the next set of gray beams on Friday, and probably we're maybe a month away from slab, so maybe middle to end of September, you'll see some structure going on with that. Just to give a reminder of what's involved in the hardscape and the landscape, it's roughly everything that's going to be west of the fire station, and then this piece in here. So that'll bring in the landscaping, the trees, pathway, the park, the two spots for public art, and then the design and the spray of the creek here, the dry creek, to make it more of a design feature, to be able to suit the community to a job. And that actually runs in, it should tie in to the side trail, which is scheduled a little right down. So we did that in partnership with our partners.
You might have mentioned one of the funding sources.
Oh, yeah. Fire, the single fire station number two.
Perfect. Yeah. I'm curious.
Our funding is in particular, I talked about that.
And they reduce costs because the firefighter you're putting in the landscape?
Finally, the big ask in the budget, which is a little bit different, is the staffing for adequate and fire emergency response, or the safer grant. That's an application that we put in at the beginning of twenty nineteen, that was when the grants opened. We have not received it, and actually, the federal government hasn't even announced it or worked yet. So this is a program that allows our department to be able to ask for firefighters that were offset and paid for by FEMA over the term of three years to be able to do that. It's for six additional firefighters. As you remember, we work three shifts, so it's two firefighters per shift. And because of the way we have our off time and our scheduling, it really works out to the on-duty is of a one point three firefighters a shift. It's kind of what we're working on here. It's specifically dealing with our west side, is the staff, our Quint, that's being replaced this year, to be able to cover service for that. And the price for this year in the budget is forty-two thousand ninety-one. And my last slide on this part of the budget goes into the costing and how it looks like over the next four years.
Keep that.
Yeah, yes, sir.
No, no, I'm sorry. Finish.
Oh, yeah. The budget transmittal, and, and again, I know you've been talking about this for the last two days. This is a very exciting time to be in Farmers Branch, to be able to talk about things like transformational change, what the community looks like, that's going on right now. It has some challenges as it relates to dealing with the creek and storm and whatnot, but the community is changing, and it's changing in a way that will make Farmers Branch different from, from here on. The new normal is high-density residential, and again, we're sure, we've been talking about specifically west side, but this is all over our community. But the west side has got probably the highest concentration of multifamily that you find pretty well anywhere in metro DFW. It is a very densely populated area. And traditionally, it's like, well, it's an apartment complex. It is, but a traditional apartment complex is two, two stories, it's about sixteen units, and a fire company can walk around it in about a minute to be able to see what's going on. Our new construction now is eight hundred units, and it's four stories, and it's three football fields long, and those are all over the community. And so what's happening now is the complexity of the event that we're responding to is, is getting to be at an urban level. Here we have, and again, a smaller apartment complex, a larger complex. Again, everybody thinks fire, which is true, but to be able to get to that fire compared to a fire in the attic here is significant, and to be able to get the companies up to that size, to get to the scene of the fire, and to be able to start working is manpower intensive. And as you start dealing with structures of these sizes, the complexity and the coordination becomes more important to be able to manage those crews as they come in. So it's demanding. We have changed our community forever. Four-floor interior hallway apartments, three, three hundred and fifty to eight hundred units each. Our new homes now coming in, I put down three thousand square foot zero lot line, but I flicked through the economic development one, I think they're going at thirty-eight hundred is the average square footage size now. These are very big wood frame structures that are put together with no separation. Normally in Farmers Branch, if you said there's a house fire, it's going to be a one-story ranch, it's twelve hundred square feet, the first engine company's going to knock it down with a hand line and be able to put it out. That's three square, that's three houses now to one, and normally, the setbacks between a house, thirty feet between the older neighborhoods, the setbacks now are ten feet. So again, our community has changed. So the request for four-person staffing specifically on Quint three right now is that the response district now is such that you've got an urban issue to be able to deal with. Again, size and complexity of the building, not necessarily volume of calls. When we came two and a half years ago, we asked for staffing to put Medic One into service full-time. That was a volume issue. Our volume of medical calls are such that we need to add another ambulance to be able to serve that. This isn't a volume issue right now. Now, it's coming, but it's a complexity issue. And really, to be able to let that officer to be able to now on those buildings and those, those high-density housing units, to be able to coordinate what's happening. And right now, when you've got a current staffing of three, you're the driver, you're my firefighter, I'm the officer, when we get off, I'm almost going straight to task to be able to manage something. So as soon as I go to task, you lose tactical perspective. When you have two firefighters in the back, the officer, take a hand line, protect the exposure, I can still stay back, and I can understand what's happening and coordinate the rest of the response. And, and that's kind of what we're going to. And again, obviously, life safety is a priority for the citizens without a doubt, but it starts getting to be an issue, but dealing with the firefighters being involved in these types of buildings and structures and, and events. And again, we always talk about fire, but if this straight-line wind or EF zero tornado was a mile east, it would land on top of one of these, and it's a little bit more complicated to be able to start searching that. The engine and truck out there, and they searched that apartment before I could get there.
Okay. So I assume that Intech knows the difference between a single-family residence and an apartment building, correct?
Our CAD does, yes.
Okay. And if there was ever a fire at a single, or at an apartment building, you're not just going to send one Quint to that building?
No, no.
You're probably going to send multiple pieces of your own equipment, but then we also have the mutual aid from the other cities.
Oh, we use that right now.
Okay. So when I was reading through this, I, what I'm wrestling with, two things, is six additional firefighters. While the budget impact this year is minimal, and for the next four years is minimal, year five, that's probably another half million dollars or more to the budget. And my question is, why would we do that? Because more likely, you're not just going to send one truck to a house fire, you're going to send two pieces of equipment, so you're going to have more men there. But then, we also have the additional benefit of being able to call in help. What I'm thinking, and this may be rudimentary or the most elementary way, of calling help for free from Carrollton, Addison, whatever, which saves us having to purchase more manpower, so to speak.
Oh, yeah. And we're doing that right now. The whole issue of Intech was to be able to leverage the sixteen fire stations that all interact with each other. So just even today, you're going to get a, when you get dispatched to a fire, and we've got the agreement that you're going to get four engines, two trucks, two ambulances, and two chiefs, that goes to every call for fire. And then we can escalate off of that. That's happening right now. But what the issue is, is right now, is that our hazard is changing, and so that issue for that first-in company to be able to start managing is getting to be more than what a traditional two-person company can safely do. And that's going on right now, and actually, this is sort of a good lead-in to it, thank you so much, is actually, all of our surrounding partners, Carrollton, Capell, but not Addison, all run four on their aerial devices because of how they manage their hazards. So actually, the discussion that I get with the chief from Carrollton, the chief Capell is, why don't you have four on your truck? Because that's what we... Because that's what we, we respond. So that happens right now, and, and, and if that was a working fire with fire, you'd have a multiple alarm there, and we bring in a whole lot more. But you still have to be able to deal with the event immediately, and then that crew still needs to be able to get to the location and start handling it. And in a structure of that size, you need to have an officer that can have tactical awareness of what's going on, and to be able to give some sort of direction. And that's what we're looking at, trying to be able to provide.
And I think also, you know, I live, I live on the west side, and where my apartment is, it's above the creek. So, I mean, just getting around to that area is tough. And, and actually, I was talking to the Plano chief, or the assistant chief, so I asked him specifically at a meeting, how many they had, and he's the one that said that they all, they have four. And so, I think eventually, we're going to have to do something, because, like you mentioned, just the structures that we're building out on the west side are just so different than what we're used to. And so, I think having a phased approach is something that we're going to need eventually. And so, I think, I honestly applaud you for looking at these types of grants, so we can kind of look at and see and evaluate what our needs are. Right now, we have, you know, two or three. But once it's fully built out, I mean, there are these three-story townhomes that are being built up there as well. And so I, I'm all about looking strategically at our future and our growth. So, I would say that this is something that we do need to start thinking about as our, as our neighborhoods are changing, especially in the new development on the west side.
That's, that's, the funny chief said Plano. And again, when you looked at the last one, the issue was, and I think Trell's asking, he goes, well, we're not Plano. And I had to think about that for a while, we're not Plano, well, that's true. But, you know, population-wise, obviously, we're not. But the land area, but we started looking at things like density and this issue, and that's what we're talking, those concentrated people in a very small area. The density for Plano is thirty-eight to twenty. Right now, with our forty thousand through the census, thirty-three fifty. But to get to the Plano density, it's only another five thousand people. And I'd make the argument that when we get the census back in twenty twenty-one, that we're going to be closer to this number than we are that one. And then as you start talking about the challenges of managing the east side, managing the watershed because of what Billingsley's doing and the changing development on the east side, that number's going to be closer to fifty as, as we all turn out of our, our careers so good. So, so that's, that's how that sort of works through. So again, that issue is like, well, we're not Plano. Well, hmm, we're not, but we're closer to Plano than what you think. And again, that's what that change for this community is, and, and we get to see it a lot. I know the police chief is seeing it a lot, is, is we're becoming urban. And that's a really weird way to get your hands around it. I mean, I've been here nineteen years, the Farmer's Branch has been a suburban bedroom of Dallas. And over that time change, even though Mark showed the picture of the east side, it didn't really change a lot. The metroplex has changed, and we've changed, and we're changing with it. And so that's where, to be able to bring forward and say, hey, look, this is something that we're going to need to start thinking about, because we've, we've changed. And to be able to do it under a phased approach was to come through and say, hey, let's use some federal grant money. If we get awarded, if we don't get awarded, this all becomes moot, because only in the budget is the city's share. Then, if we don't get awarded, then I'll come back next year, and I'll have an all-in cost in, in twenty twenty-two. So, is to say, hey, look, people are there now. And again, that's the challenge, and we had that challenge in the Woodlands, was, does the first person in the new neighborhood have the, expect the same level of service as the last person? Do you say, I'm going to build a fire station for personal money? Or say, nope, I'm going to wait till person ten thousand, and then we build it? Or is there a way to, to feather that in? And I think this is that issue, we're trying to feather that in, to be able, to be able to bring on the staffing to deal with the hazard that's there right now, and then be able to use that money to be able to get to a point, as to what you said, Councilman, that all-in number is about six hundred thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Please don't misconstrue my comments. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do this. I'm saying that at some point in time after four years, there's going to be a big hit to the Fire Department budget that the taxpayers are going to have to live with forever, so.
Yeah, and, and I think that because of this phased approach, we can start looking at, kind of just like we're taking, reallocating other funds. I mean, we just had the citizen survey, and public safety is one of the things that they're, they love about our city. And so I think that using that information and, and having this phased approach, it'll give us a, um, because we already know that we're going to have to do that, right? So, it'll give us time to be able to, to understand that, okay, in three, four years, we're going to have to find it somewhere. And so, that's what, you know, even earlier, we were talking about priorities, right? Obligations. And so, maybe there are some things that can wait, and some things that we just can't do, because at the end of the day, our, we're providing a service. And public safety is one of those big services that our residents love about our city, as well as our parks. So, and, and I think this phased approach will give us, we know in four years, we're going to need it. And so, we have four years to figure out where we're going to get it from, but eventually, it's going to be something I feel like we're going to have to address on the west side because of that changing demographic, and because of the changing, you know, the buildings that are there and that urban feel that we don't really see in, you know, the area around, you know, Riedrup and the middle where the library is, right? It's just different. And we don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, you, you know, and, and while it's easy to see this, we're also, when you look at the math of it, and what the obligation is, you know, six hundred and eighteen thousand in five years, this five percent, it is a five percent increase over the budget. And, you know, when we're limited to three and a half, because of all of those people, I mean, this is projection now based on current costs. But the reality is, in year five, it's not going to be six eighteen, it's going to be three percent plus three percent plus three percent plus three percent. You know, it'll be, yeah, seven, seven, yeah, it'll, it'll be more than that. And when you compare, I mean, the total budget is twelve million, so it's, it's five percent. At some point in time, there will come a squeeze for future councils where they're going to have to say, we can't give three percent, right? You know, you know, as we're limited by what the state allows, or we're going to have to strip something else. It's just, it's a big, we're putting a big commitment on, you know, for us, forty-three grand is, it's nothing. But we're, we're, we are, we are burdening future councils.
The other port, though, is that we've entitled like one point five billion worth of construction, which we fully realized at this time from a tax basis.
Yeah.
So, there, it's not like that we're, we've got the hundred and twenty-two million current year budget that's got to fund initial six eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. It, it, it's just, we, we should be aware of what, what we're doing, and, and I, I think you made a great case, you know, for the need. It, it's just, it's a big consequence.
It's, it's a big consequence, and again, I don't envy your position. And, and again, we've, we've added historical Farmer's Branch to the west side. Well, it's going to be distributed, but there's going to be twenty thousand people living west of thirty-five, south of Valley View. That's a tough one for me to get my mind around, but, but we're seeing it. And it's how we're going to serve that, we're, we're going to have to do something. And it's not just the Fire Department, the Police Department has the same demand, the Parks Department's going to have the same demand. We're, we're serving a dynamic population that's pretty well doubled since, you know, because I always say Farmer's Branch is twelve point five thousand, that's kind of what I would say. But we're going to be closer to fifty, and, and that's a tough one for me to get my mind around, and what does that look like, and how do we deal with it?
And the sixth additional would only be for the west side, right? We're not doing the six additional firefighters for this grant, the six additional firefighters for this grant, is it everywhere?
No, 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 it's two per shift.
But it's only on the west side?
And, and the firefighter, it's one point three firefighters roughly per shift. So the, you go Quint one thirty-three, it would become a full-time, four-person staff engine. And we have point three fires.
West side.
Yeah, it's west side.
It is.
Okay, just point of clarification.
That's, that's where, the west side is, is, is very different. That's my presentation.
Thank you, chief. Any final questions for you? It's eleven fifty-two, what time we see lunch was?
At noon, this is a good time.
And this is probably a good time to take a break, so let's take a break till noon. At noon, please go get your lunch, and I think we're coming back here to eat, right, to continue presentation.
Correct, you want to have until twelve thirty to have the presentation? Do you want to eat in silence for a while, or do you want to?
What's the sentence, you guys want to?
Let's just eat, push through, push through, bring the plates here, and just continue.